We're good. So I think we had prepared, we'd all seen a certain way to the agenda. So Andy, why don't I turn it over to you to sort of lead us off? Where's John Collins going to? The first item is the status of the road work on the retail construction and tenant opening dates with the satisfaction of the life safety issues identified by the new castle building inspector. So maybe Andy or you or John could bring us, tell us where you are with construction and especially the road improvements.
Dave should do that.
Oh, Dave, okay. So Dave, do you want to provide us an overview of sort of where you are with construction, opening dates, what has been done, remains to be done?
You know, in terms of percentage wise in construction, we're roughly about 93% complete. Obviously, some of the work that needs to be done on site revolves around finished paving, curving, you know, some landscaping, things of that nature. In terms of opening date, Whole Foods is still targeting the middle of December, as is Lifetime Fitness and Chase. Fidelity has applied for their building permit. Pet Value has applied for their building permit. I think Pet Value was provided. They've got theirs, I'm sorry, and they've already begun to work. And our work on Roaring Brook Road actually had some, a little bit of good news this week. Con Ed has now put power to the new traffic signal on Roaring Brook Road from the school. So that will likely be blinking by the end of the day today. Con Ed has also worked on the feeders to remove that pole, and they're anticipating that to be done this Friday. So once Con Ed moves those feeders on the Roaring Brook Road, then Altice, Crown Castle, and Verizon will move the low voltage, and we're expecting that to be done in the next week or so. You know, again, we're at the mercy of those vendors, and then we can remove that pole and get Roaring Brook Road, you know, completely restored. Yesterday, we had our kickoff meeting with the New York State DOT, which went very well. We went through their checklist, and everything seems to be in order. They were kind enough to sign off on our first submittal right there at the meeting, which Bob was at, for the drainage structures that will be going along Route 117. And so those orders were placed immediately following the meeting. So we're anticipating right now that we'll be starting probably December 3rd in the DOT area and have the right turn lane completed quickly following that for our safety reasons. And we are being told from all of our vendors that the Blacktop plant closing now looks to be about 12:21. So we'll, we have some breathing room there, and that's our plan right now.
So just to be clear, we have the DOT permit.
I have a copy of that.
And Whole Foods went into the newspapers with an opening date of December 12th with some sort of a soft opening, I'm not sure, something on December 10th, which I think is a party or something. So that...
Dave, when will the traffic light be operational?
The Roaring Brook Road traffic light?
Yeah.
So they blink it, and then we, you know, Rob, I don't have the exact data. So once it's, they want it, they want it to blink for a while, then we stripe it. We have to stripe the road because we didn't want to stripe it beforehand to create confusion on Roaring Brook Road. I think the weather looks good for next week. It's going to be in the 40s, so they'll probably strike next week and then activate it.
Who takes ownership or who has to approve the signal being turned on?
It's a town. It's a town traffic light, so I'm assuming it's the town.
TPW would be here, but they're the icing.
And so what's a percentage of the stores that have been leased? So between now and, say, next May, what are the stores would you expect to be opening?
So we're, we have signed leases for approximately 87% of the shopping center, and leases in negotiations that will take us up to 95. Essentially, the only building that we don't, don't have anybody commit, anybody interested in or is Building C, which is the drive-through building that we all basically designed for Starbucks. That one, my guess is that'll stay empty for quite a while. Everything else will be filled by May.
Filled, but what would be the opening date? I'm sorry, what would be the opening date for those on the speaker?
Well, these are, these are estimates, so we'll have...
Well, it also proposed, I guess, too.
Yeah, Whole Foods, thank you. Well, half, full half W, right? Whole Foods, Lifetime, and Chase, December.
At the same time as Whole Foods?
Yeah, I think Lifetime's going to be after them. They're...
Lifetime's announced after. They've sent messages to all their people that signed up. It's January.
Okay. So they hadn't formally told me that. I was in the store yesterday, so, okay, let's go with, if you've got that, you know more than I do. So it would be Chase and Whole Foods in December, Lifetime in January.
Pet Value probably sometime in February, and...
Fidelity in...
Fidelity is probably February, is my guess.
February. Northern Westchester, March.
Yeah, I'd say March or...
March. So that takes care of Building A and B. For those of you who don't remember your letters to your buildings, Building A is Whole Foods, Building B is about 7,000 square feet to the right of Whole Foods looking at it. So those, that building's fully leased.
Can you talk, because there's people on the phone, can you talk to the drawing and kind of walk them through which one?
Can I see the drawing?
Andy, maybe you can just real quickly, so people know which buildings you're talking about.
So the drawing is an overview of the retail plan or the entire site, and the retail plan is in the left center. The building on the left is the Whole Foods building. The building on the, the rights lower at the, it's actually at the east. North is to the right on the page is Lifetime Fitness. The buildings were lettered A, B, C, D, E, F going...
Clockwise.
Clockwise from Whole Foods. So Felix was describing the Whole Foods building and the 7,000 square feet adjacent to that. Building C was a standalone building, and the top right of the parking lot was the design for Starbucks.
Starbucks.
Starbucks, thank you. And then Buildings D and E are on the right side of the main entry drive coming in.
So we would expect that Buildings A, B, D, and E will be 100% occupied and fully open by May, with rolling openings going on as each tenant builds out with no projection on what happens with C.
And there's no, and Whole Foods is not going to waver on the vetoing the coffee place over at C?
We've, we've tried every, no. If you've been in the new Whole Foods store down there, you'll see that they built a much more significant coffee bar than I've seen in any of their other stores. So the answer, no, that's, that's not going to happen. We may be able to put Starbucks in line, which we're talking about, but Whole Foods has in their lease the veto rights over who occupies C because of the shared parking relative on the lease side of the equation. So we're, you know, we have other people in mind, but we're just not at a place where I can even speculate if they'll arrive.
And Chase, do you want to move in there?
Well, at the time, we pushed Chase into the, into the end caps. We had another idea for it. Well, they actually built their store.
They already built that, yeah. Good. So then, what needs to be done, what needs to happen between now and when the store's open? Obviously, there is the conditions and the planning board and the secret mitigation area. So who wants to talk about that?
Well, okay, I mean, we submitted a letter that's a draft, okay, at this point, and that's one of the things we wanted to talk about today. The way we're framing it, you know, we would hope is you at least understand from the perspective here is that what created the delay was not self-imposed, but what created the delay was the state taking the position that because of changes that were made down by the Sawmill Parkway, until that was resolved, they refused to issue the permit up at Route 117, which was our initial obligation. And in fact, they put the obligation, certain obligations out by the Sawmill Parkway on us, which were never part of the findings, never part of the requirements of this, and frankly, we've stepped up and agreed to do them and pay for them, even though technically, if you wanted to be in a legal fight, in my opinion, they had no right to do it, but there's just no time or, you know, we just said, we're going to pay it. And in fact, we've already paid the money and put up a bond, and it's sitting there. So that's been settled, and we're doing it, and we're just not arguing about it. The same token, they've put us in a terrible position because Whole Foods, you know, they really want to be open Christmas season. Lifetime at least wanted to be, was telling us repeatedly, they need to sell memberships in December, Christmas, because everyone's fat January 1st, that's when they join the gym. And then they quit on January 31st, right? Like, that's their big month, and really, you know, you'd see, you have to deal with these kinds of things. So we very much are trying to get to the point where we're going to be in a position to deliver those, especially large stores, on that timeframe. So the way, the way we did it was we went back with the help of your staff and a lot of work to identify all of the conditions that come out of not just the approval resolutions, but the findings and all the things that would need to be amended to get into this document if, in fact, they're not there. And then what we did was with our people, go back and identify first what we believe will be done by, we were using the date December 10th, that's that soft opening date, what we believe would be there, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Those things don't occur in here, so they're not in here. We're not, in this letter, we're not asking for the relief from those. We've only left in the letter the issues that we don't expect to have done by December 10th, and we can, we do have schedules, though, that we can talk about when we would expect those things to be finished. And with regard to that, we obviously had long conversations with your administration officials here with regard to separating out life safety issues from, we'll call them non-life safety issues. Of course, these are conditions that have to be done, and we do it in the context of also recognizing, fortunately for us, we're not at full build-out yet. So even though the retail is going to be opening through the spring, obviously, the East Village is not done and occupied, and a lot of the traffic has been done with the context, it's always done in the context of full build-out. So that's kind of how we frame it, and however you'd like this morning to go through it, I will only say this, we did have some conversations earlier this week. There are a series of conditions, 10 or 15 of them, I don't...
There's 16.
16 conditions that we'll identify and go through, we'll show them to you, but they are conditions that we expect to be finished by December 10th, but we're going to ask to put them back into the letter because even if we finish them in time, there may be an inspection that needs to get done, there may be... Now, again, even if we agree, if the town board agrees to do this, the planning board agrees to this, there's still going to be discretion on behalf of the building officials as to whether we're ready to open, period. This is just giving them the authority to do it. So we're going to ask for those things to go in, just in case we're a day off or three days off or four days off on some of those other items, and we'll put those in as well. So that's kind of framing it, and however you like, we can go condition by condition. You tell us, that's how this is laid out in the letter.
I just want to raise one issue, and that is, we're talking about life safety issues, and we're here with the town board, the planning board, and building department, et cetera. But one of the issues on this is, I think you also need to coordinate with emergency services. You need to coordinate with the police, you need to coordinate with the fire department. We need to get their input in here and understand what they think they need, because we're not going to be, no matter what, if we go forward with a TCO, we're not going to be anywhere near what we want in terms of the conditions and all these resolutions. So we need to coordinate with them and see what they can do to help you in mitigate some of these situations. So so far, as far as I can see, there's kind of a missing link in this, but we need to, I think we need to engage them really fast.
That's fair. Could we maybe, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, no, we can do that. It's a great point. We'll certainly have that meeting as soon as we...
I think you also need to coordinate with the school officials as well, because this obviously is impacting Greeley. We have to make sure it works with their schedule, and I think they need to be involved in making sure that they're okay with whatever.
I have a regular dialogue with, is it Christine? Yeah, I have a Christina and a Kristina, so I have regular dialogue with her. So we've met a number of times, a person she's been on site, she's met with all of our people, and we speak a lot, and I think we're in the same place. But once we get open, we're going to have, you know, the kids are going to be parking there and things of this nature, so we're going to have a continual dialogue.
But that's a great idea. We'll, as soon as we're able, set up a meeting, if it's a short week next week, get them in the room, go through all of these conditions, and let them know what's happening. And we are, and if necessary, we've even talked about that. If we need to have a, you know, request for a traffic officer or when the school hour is open in the first weeks it took, we're going to do all of that. So we're happy to sit in a room and discuss with them what they think is necessary over there. We're happy to do that.
And we can try and get that meeting as soon as possible, and I think one of the considerations for that meeting is going to be that light. And I know you're moving forward and doing things, but I'm going to ask Lou to, you know, really talk to the town. Again, it's the first light that we've had, and there, you know, Lou is familiar with, you know, local lights type of thing. I'd like to make sure that the town hears from Lou regarding that light and its operation and the sign-off that we need to do on that light. And I think that the school and the fire and the police are going to want to know about that as well.
Right.
So we need to, we need to focus in on that.
Totally. But to be clear, the issues that we're talking about right now, at least in my opinion, I'm not the expert, these are not life safety. We've made sure that, in our opinion, the life safety issues have been satisfied, and that's what our experts tell us, and we do need to talk to emergency services about that. Obviously, these things all have to be taken care of, but we're fairly confident, we are confident that that, that those things have been taken off the table.
We need to be there with you.
We agree. No, no, we, all of them should be...
And just for a matter of process, with a December 10th soft opening and December 12th hard opening, really, the meetings we're focused on is the December 4th meeting of the, when the planning board and the town board meets, because before Bill can have authority to issue any building permits, the planning board of the town board need to modify the conditions in their respective finding statement under the planning board's site plan approval resolution that says no CO, temporary or final, can be issued until the Roaring Brook Road improvements are completed. As you've seen in the packet, as we'll get into, those improvements won't be completed. That's acknowledged. They set forth from a traffic standpoint why they believe those conditions should be modified, and that's what we're going to hear today. But ultimately, the action to be taken by the two boards is to modify, is to consider modifying those conditions. And so we really just have a week of the 26 from a staff level perspective to answer those questions. And Bobby raised good points, and now that we have the full application, we have this meeting today, we'll reach out to the emergency services in the school and coordinate those meetings.
Before your meeting on the 4th.
What other issue is that?
Before you do that, could we get a clarification? I keep hearing life safety issues being, being thrown about here. What are the life safety issues that, from your point of view?
The only one, the one that I'm aware from the town board and the planning board's perspective, I'll let Sabrina add on to this, is the improvements at Roaring Brook Road, because the off-site improvements were to have been completed to allow for traffic circulation as identified as a mitigation measure.
I'm going to add, I'm going to add to that. Wait a minute. I think life safety is much broader than that, Nick. I think that the life safety that is really out of the town's control, in the sense it's in New York State DOT's hands, or anything that's not on Town Road or the applicant's property, that the building inspector needs to certify. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bill to talk about, from his perspective, what life safety is. You know, it's not only the circulation on the exterior roadways, it's circulation within the site. Dave, you said it's 93% done, you've got X, Y, and Z that's going to be done next week. The devil is in the details in regards to that site work, and Bill is the only town official who is on that site on a weekly, if not daily, other day, of every other day basis, watching the construction of the buildings. Bob is there to look out for the site work, and so I think it's critical that when we talk life safety, there's different levels of authority in regard, in regards to life safety, and the boards need to make the decisions to enable the forward movement if those areas are addressed. And so Bill, do you want to talk a little bit about what you know or feel, or kind of how you're viewing things?
Well, needless to say, life, life safety, to me, the major part of it is the actual building construction, construction, dial-up services for the fire department, the police and whatnot, sprinklers, water suppression, that type of thing. But then you also have signage on site, so if and when a call goes out and the emergency services show up, they need a direction. Once they pull onto the site, they don't know what building there's a problem in. I mean, we could say Building A, D, or C or D, but all of that signage has to be on. I've been working with John, and he went out and got the address numbers and whatnot to put on the buildings, notification where the sprinklers are and whatever, sprinkler rooms, electric rooms and whatnot, that the emergency services would first go to, you know, to shut the building down or check the sprinkler system or the emulsators and whatnot. Past that, if you go in with the fire trucks, you have to make sure you get the turning radiuses and whatnot in that. That I would leave to Bob. It has to meet certain state codes as far as I'm concerned, but the road widths and whatnot, I know Bob has been checking turn radiuses and whatnot.
Well, they provided that.
Yeah, so if he gives me confirmation on that, that's fine with me, I'll check that off on the box.
And the bill's point, too, also, too, with the site itself, it's important. I think we had this discussion when we have those weekly meetings, all the lighting has to be in, the striking has to be in, all the signage has to be in, all the guardrails, we mentioned those two, and then retaining certification. So those are the site items, they're big items, but I think we agreed upon that, and you're making good headway here, we just sat there the other day. It looks pretty great.
So Phil and Bob, is there anything that you've seen and that you've had discussions with that gives you a concern that it wouldn't be done by December 10th, or that they're not addressing to your satisfaction?
No, they're, site-wise, they're doing pretty good. Of course, weather.
There's been some...
It's been a little damp out there, yeah.
Can I just make one point? I just want to make clear, we've not asked for relief on any of these items. We recognize these things have to be finished. We're not asking you to change any conditions with respect to any of them, and if we're not done by the 4th of December, as we sit in your meeting, or you have someone telling you it's going to be done within 48 hours, we're not expecting you to act on that, you know, with respect to that. So we get that, and we know that we have to do this. So it's clear to people who are just picking this up today that what we're asking for in the letter are not these items. These are, that's the separation between what I said, life safety versus non-life safety.
I think the issue from the planning board's perspective, and I think the towns generally, is globally, you're anticipating a large influx into that site in the next couple of weeks. Is the site ready to handle it from a safety perspective? I think that's the overall question.
And we spend, the town spends enormous amount of time on traffic. So on one level, it's, it's nothing short of just optics, but on another level, it's really important during the traffic. You're going to have a gigantic influx. It's the holidays, people go crazy when they see a new place open up. I think it's probably going to be more than you're normally going to see in terms of traffic for Whole Foods. We put all these conditions in here over all these years for reasons. It wasn't just because we felt like, okay, Felix, let's put a sidewalk here, let's put a crosswalk here, let's see how this works. You may thought we did, but we didn't.
Glad you fully clarified that.
I said late in the game, but I want to make sure everybody understood. But in any event, all these conditions and what you're asking for, obviously, is a delay in these, but at the same token, it's winter, it's construction, to a certain extent, it's even more dangerous. So the issue is how, we understand what you're asking for, obviously, but we have to make certain, like, those delays and the mitigation, the things that we do instead of, as we delay, are going to be okay, because we had put all these conditions in to make this place work and make it work on a safe basis, on a convenient basis, on a traffic basis, make it work for you commercially. So the issue for us, we certainly understand that, you know, obviously, we're bonded and everything else, you're going to do it, but the issue is, how much can we go ahead with, and how much can we postpone, and what do we do in lieu of that postponement to make this work for all of us? So I did, you know, it's critically important to echo Les' comment, we look at it much more globally, and we took all these conditions extremely seriously. We know that you guys have been on the whipping end from the state. It's terrible, I think. But in any event, we're here to try to work with you, but the same token, you've got to work with us, because we have got to get, if nothing else, for optics, and I think it's much more than optics, we have got to make sure, for example, that 117 is going to be an absolute mess. And how is that going to work with schools? How's it going to work, again, emergency services, that's the main route up to Northern Westchester. So if it's clogged up because of construction, how the ambulance is going to get through? What's the deal? How are the police going to be running that?
It's not optics. I mean, optics is somewhat relevant.
It's very minor, actually.
This weather...
Hi, excuse me, little Ivy, I just want to make the point that, you know, there's a bunch of us on the phone, and we're trying to listen, it's hard, there's a lot of background noise, and side conversations are making it very hard to focus on the person who's speaking. And while I'm speaking, I would just add that I'm very interested to hear the overview of the traffic analysis that was appended to the letter that was printed. I had some trouble parsing what was there, and I feel like that's critical to this conversation to understand what that analysis was, who was involved in it, and what the findings were.
Very good. Thank you, Ivy. We'll do a better job of moving the speakerphone around, so you're adjacent to the speaker.
Put your phone on mute.
Thank you, Nick, I appreciate it.
Ivy, put your phone on mute when you're not, when you're just listening.
Well, my phone is on mute.
Oh, it is, okay.
Or whoever else is online, because there's no background noise here.
Right, right. We're being pretty good about avoiding the background noise. So do we want to hear from...
Well, Jeremy was talking.
This is the short of it, was to mimic what you were saying, you know, certainly optics is somewhat relevant, but the big issue is, God forbid we have this weather again, and you're not ready for emergency services, everything's not signed properly. I won't go into my issues with on 117, because I've lost them countless times off of certain roads, Ann and Del not being the only one. It's an accident waiting to happen. It's going to be terror. It's going to be terror. Forget nightmare, that's not even the right word. It's just going to be a trap for people potentially. Look what happened last night, which is certainly probably atypical, but that road is not made to sustain this, no matter what anyone says here, in my opinion. It is what it is, we're going forward, but it needs to be made sure that it is up to stop and ready to go, for safety purposes, period.
So why don't we, all valid points, again, I will say that, and we'll let John touch on it, that not only is the East Village not done, but Felix pointed out, we have over 50% vacancy in the office. So again, when all of these things were put in, they were put in with respect to a full build-out, so we're not there yet. So to some extent, when people are asking you questions about, well, they're opening it, yes, but there's a lot that's not open yet. So this is the concept that we're talking about here, which maybe could have been earlier, is there's a phased analysis of what we're talking about, and that's kind of what John has done. So if we turn it to John, maybe he can just talk about what he's...
Yeah, but you know, the major traffic is not going to be in the office, it's going to come from Whole Foods and Lifetime.
Different peaks, different peaks. I'd like to ask a question about the state's temporary approval of this intersection. Do we have any justification from them, any documents from them that indicate their reasons why they're approving it? It seems to me that those are conditions that we ought to understand and either adopt or don't, because in the end, we are responsible for our own actions, correct? So do we have that kind of documentation as a background for our decision? Do they document these kinds of decisions?
If I understand, you're asking DOT's thoughts with respect to the improvements not being completed at the intersection?
Right.
I don't know that DOT is going to opine on that. We haven't had that discussion, I think it's a fair question. I don't know that DOT is going to opine on whether or not we can open it, because that's a town decision.
I'm sorry, I thought that this was the, it was on our table because DOT had authorized the opening of that intersection for this particular...
The work, just the permit, just the permit.
So we're flying on our own here?
Yes, right. They've granted the permit, they're now out of the discussion, now it's in your hands.
Just constructed.
Right. So during the operation of the intersection while it's under construction, do they have any review position, any review authority?
Yeah. I mean, that's the same. It's an interesting question, but they're not going to, well, I think it's fair comment, and we can reach out to them. I don't think they're going to give us any definitive role, because ultimately, it's up to us to decide whether to issue...
So if the intersection, for whatever reason, if the intersection happens to fail, does the, is it likely or possible that the DOT would come in and say, wait a minute, sorry, you've got to close the entrance of the site because, because the highway is not functioning according to tower standards?
Right, the town would have to take that.
So it's all on us?
Yes, it is all on us.
But we have consultants, and we're going to review this.
And just from our perspective, it really is on the developer and the contractor who own the intersection and own the signal until the town takes ownership of it and signs off that everything was constructed as per plan, including the timing and phasing, and then you guys actually take ownership of it at that point in time.
That's the local signal. The state would take ownership of their signal.
Right. And it comes down to whoever's signing the plans for the intersection design, and then
and then whoever's going to sign off on that, that everything was done correctly. At that point, it's yours.
Other than the fact that if it doesn't work, you get phone calls every day.
Then you don't take it if it doesn't work.
We always get those anyway, you said that, Rob?
Yeah, exactly.
So, John, do you want to walk us through the work that's going to be completed and explain your traffic analysis?
John, you're going to probably have to come close to this.
Let me move the speakerphone down.
I do better stand. I'm going to give you the short version because it's a detailed study. What we did is we went through all the traffic conditions that would be, that were outlined in the findings. They will all be done except for the work, the completion of all the work up at the intersection of Roaring Brook Road and 117. That's the part that was delayed because of the DOT action that Mark talked about. So what we did is we counted this four, the intersections affecting, to find out what the existing traffic level is. We covered all the daytime hours, the two morning, the two morning school hours, the dismissal hour for the school and the PMP hour. We looked at all those hours, we got, so we took a snapshot in time as to what the 2018 volumes were at that location. And then we did an analysis of what would be the existing level of service at location using the exact same methodology we used in the DEIS and the FEIS. And then we superimposed upon that a retail area of 100,000 square feet, which included what we anticipated would be the magnitude of the development that would have occurred by the time we would be able to complete all the improvements at 117. So, we did that analysis and we did, as part of the packet, a comparison of what the level of service would be at 117 with no retail, what it would be at Roaring Brook Road 117 with the 100,000 square foot retail. We found out that there would be a deterioration in the level of service if we had put that on to the existing system. Then we looked at what the improvements would be. And we peeled back the type of improvements that we could have in place prior to the opening of Whole Foods. And the easiest one to get accomplished would be the southbound right turn lane, which will allow traffic, which will basically take the vibe of traffic that's coming down from, I'll say Mount Kisco. Making either a right turn to the Sawmill or going south on Vetra Grove. As well as the additional retail traffic that could be on that approach. Now, most of the retail traffic from that approach would have already made the right turn at the driveway and going to the site, as opposed to using Roaring Brook Road. But, there would be traffic coming out of the site, making a left turn out of the driveway, coming up towards, using Roaring Brook Road towards 117 that would impact it, as well as traffic wanting to turn left to go down Roaring Brook Road to turn right into the site. So using the exact same distribution we had before, the exact same methodology, and 100,000 square feet of retail using the exact same rates that were in the report, to keep everything consistent. We found that if we could get the right turn lane open, we would actually get a better level of service than it is there today without the retail. And we said, okay, with that analysis, we could open this center, the retail, with that right turn lane in place. And that's what we're striving to now. Right now, the first priority of the contractor is to do the work required by DEP. We expect any drainage, especially on the southbound side. We're going to go in then widen 117 in a southbound direction to provide the right turn lane. In fact, there's a schematic plan in that packet that shows exactly what the work would be done. And we feel if we ran into weather problems, we could get that work done. And the last thing I want to do is try to open up the construction of the wall unless I have a season to make sure I can get that work done and completed. I don't want to leave the road open during the wintertime if I can help it.
Did I misunderstand you, John? Did you say that your analysis was that if there were not a retail opening and you completed the southbound turn lane, that you'd see an improvement in service?
And you would even with the retail opening, you would see?
Oh, even with?
Even with.
So, John, can I back you up a second? I think it might be helpful if for everybody here and on the phone, you could just outline, you know, the five or six improvements that were approved as part of the approval and then identify which ones you're not going to be able to accomplish by that timeframe. Because I think, you know, we all know if we've looked at the plans, what your improvements consist of. But if you haven't really looked at the plans or spent a lot of time on this, it would be helpful if you could say, the improvements include, from the existing situation today.
And what would the impacts be for those that aren't going to be done? If all six aren't going to be done?
Correct.
We went through, in my letter, we went through the requirements that would be in place, that would be conditioned and what would be in place. So for example, the work inside the driveway to the school, which requires part of the findings. That work has already been completed.
You want to go through what you have here?
I'm referring to your letter, November 14.
It's John's letter.
It's attached.
And folks, if you look at the email that was sent, it's not the front page by the attorney. There's a back letter that starts with the letter from John Collins.
I think it's about page 15.
Around page 15.
I'm on it, thanks for reading.
Okay.
I'm on the bottom of the first page.
Got it.
And it said, one of the requirements was re-timing at the various intersections, Sawmill Route 120, 128. Those re-timings would be timings to adjust the green lights and the red lights and the balance of the intersection to accommodate these traffic volumes as they then existed. Normally it's done after completion of the entire project. But, the Sawmill is one that we've already talked about, that there's going to be additional work done in the spring, if approved by DOT and DEP, at that location, that we've already put money into, as Mark talked about, to handle that improvement that goes beyond the re-timing of the intersection. There's actually a brand new signal being anticipated, there is additional pavement, etc. That's all work.
Here's the thing, John, I really want to focus on the Route 117 intersection. Because those are the decisions that you're asking the town to make. And, you know, we know that you have a commitment to work with DOT to satisfy them down by the Sawmill. The question is, when, on December 10th, December 12th, what is going to be done versus what won't be done?
Okay. If I only focus at the intersection of 117 and Roaring Brook Road. The requirement was the construction of a southbound right turn lane, the construction of a northbound left turn lane, which required a block wall to be done, and a new signal. That was the requirement for the improvements by the state at that location to provide a town. All three of those have been permitted by the state. There's a permit out there that covers all three of those conditions.
It's in your package.
Right? The timing of that work is what we're discussing now. The first thing we're going to do is build the southbound right turn lane. That can be done, it doesn't call for any modification to the existing traffic signal. The existing traffic signal for work. The next phase would be the construction of the wall.
Just a chalk file.
And that would be done by?
Right, thanks, Jeff.
Was the right-hand turn lane?
And that will be done by the opening of Whole Foods.
The right, the right turn lane.
Southbound right turn.
Southbound right turn.
We are not seeking relief on that condition.
Good, okay, thanks.
The next phase would be, and I'm going through the sequential construction process, would be the construction of the block wall.
That's needed for the northbound.
In order for me to construct the northbound left turn lane. So, construction of the right turn lane, construction of the block wall.
And what's the timing of that?
So, weather permitting for that, so, south of Roaring Brook Road, so that's, we're really talking about Mr. Lewis's property, right? So along that retaining wall. So, weather permitting, we will be working on that through the winter. So, we can do that. These are modular block walls, they go in very, you know, somewhat quickly and without a lot of disruption. So, if the weather permits, we will continue to work in that area, get that wall up and then, you know, through spring, through completion. But, you know, it's.
So it's going to take spring, assuming, I'm sorry, one second. Assuming that the weather's fine and you can continue working, when do you anticipate that wall and then the subsequent left turn lane could be built? It's not going to be till the spring?
Let me just follow your question, forget the wall, the wall is the precursor, it's the condition to get the left turn lane. So, when is the left turn lane going to be on? Going to be on? Not the wall being on.
That's why I just, I said both the wall and the left turn lane.
Has to be done before we can put in the left turn lane. So, if you're coming northbound to put the left turn lane on at Roaring Brook Road, the wall has to be completed.
Right, so the question is when?
So when, when would you anticipate both be done, assuming the weather works?
Assuming the weather does work.
No, no, I'm assuming it works because then I'm assuming it's going to be after that because we know the weather's not good.
We would probably be somewhere in the January, February timeline. But our, you know, some of our issue is obviously paving, because the paving plant's closed, right? So final paving will not occur until the spring regardless. And the DOT won't permit that.
Right.
Forget the issue as to why, so then what happens to all the folks going northbound? Emergency services going to Northern Westchester Hospital, Mount Kisco Medical, Carolina, and just going to school? What happens to all those?
So, just so it's clear, so John can talk to this. John's analysis, that's what this analysis is, is based on the volumes that are now there, recalculating those based on the fact that we won't have that left turn lane. That's the analysis that John just did and he's sitting here telling you, which is now going to be reviewed by your own consultants, saying this works at those levels. Clearly it'll be better.
It's not going north, it works going south, which is what John said. Not going north, there's no change.
Well, no, in fact, what happens though is by construction of the southbound lane, the additional capacity, I basically take, just an example, right now there's close to 700 cars heading southbound.
Right, but we're talking about going northbound.
Let me, let me finish, okay?
Yeah.
And what happens is, it's all on one lane, it's either right turn or it's through. By construction of the second lane, the right turn lane, I take that traffic and basically split it.
Right.
Now, what that allows me to do is get back green time on the southbound direction that I can reallocate to the northbound direction.
Right.
So, I'm taking, I'm getting, I'm getting green time back, then I can apply the northbound, which helps the left turn.
But you've been there, it doesn't help the left turn because anybody who has to make a left turn then, one person is stopping, is backing up traffic going down the whole street.
That's the analysis of the.
I know, I know, but it's not making any changes.
Can we just, can we admit though, it's something at this table amongst us, this, look, this is a temporary situation, right? So we're trying to cure a temporary situation.
Let's talk.
But can we also state that for the record, it's great to know what happened in October 2018, 2017. Can we all admit here amongst ourselves, perhaps Martin, off the record, that this is, we're going to see a much greater than usual spike in traffic. So can we realistically deal with that condition that we can expect? We're going to see a tremendous spike in activity. It's holidays, it's the opening of a new, a Whole Foods store and it's going to be great excitement, which is fantastic. But can we deal with that anticipated condition and not say, well, this, you know, it'll be better because we have this? It's going to be a hark. What are the mitigations that we can take to offset the anticipation of this?
So, can I just put a pin in that, just to, I mean, the analysis is great. I haven't been through it because I'm seeing it right now for the first time. I'd just like to ask, just to get to the point, for the northbound left in the temporary condition where you don't have that left turn lane, just tell me what the level of service will be? The worst level of service at what time of day? And does that anticipate, does that anticipate the conditions that Bob is rightfully bringing up?
The condition that Bob brings up, I'm going to have to address differently, the spike that opened the car, okay? The spiking condition is a different condition that we have to look at it separately, okay? If I look at the PMP hour, the five to six, the five to six at the end. The northbound left through, okay, is, without, without the improvement would be operating, and the retail, would be operating at level service F, which is, we all know, is not the greatest thing.
What about with the retail?
Worse than F.
With the retail?
With the retail.
Yes, with the retail.
No, there's nothing more than F, you could be in C and it's still F.
That would happen.
Folks, one conversation please. Go ahead.
With the, with the retail. I got to get the, let me move this to the page.
So you said F is what, in the current condition?
Yeah, without the retail.
Just, no, no, right now it's F, so let, will it hear how much worse, what changes?
No, there's F, but there's.
There's levels of service F that are worse than other levels.
Right.
It gives you the time of the light.
It gives you the time of the light.
I mean, this is the issue, is we know that that intersection is going to be bad. Which is, whether there's a spike or not, no matter what, it's going to be bad. Which is why the condition to put a left turn lane was put in to try to mitigate that somewhat. So that, no matter what, when it's open, we're understanding now, is not going to be there, that left turn lane. So I guess the issue is, what kind of other mitigations? And with all due respect, the light being green a little longer is not going to help. So, hold on one second. The question I think that everyone's asking is what kind of mitigations can we put in there to help knowing that this traffic already, I agree, is an F and already is backed up down the road at peak times? It's only going to get worse. And as we've talked about for many, many years, F is F, there are levels of F, but it doesn't get, your little letter qualification doesn't get worse. If it's a Z, it's still an F. So, the question is, what, what can we do during the interim, during the time between now and the spring to make it better?
I didn't, I didn't finish, okay? I didn't finish, I mean, the question is, what would happen if I put Whole Foods and the retail on that intersection, it made no improvements, okay? I would still keep that left, that F that we're talking about before. If I made the southbound and I reallocated the time, I get improvements to, an overall approach would be a B, C. It's on a B, C range. I get actual improvements because I've been able to take time, and this can be checked by your consultant, I don't have to do it myself, all right? This is what we say would happen with those improvements on the interim condition. Now, to address the spiking issue, okay, that occurs when the minute something opens, all right? There's a rush to get in, etc. The only way you can take care of spiking conditions, as we talked about before, we're going to talk about that with the police, is to put a patrolman there to direct traffic during those particularly spiking conditions in order to address those issues. Because there's no way you can adjust the signal to take into account the surge that's going to occur due to an opening of something like a Whole Foods in the first week.
You're proposing, you should say 117 or Roaring Brook.
The spiking issue has to be taken care of by field personnel. That has to be done.
We're open to that.
But I still don't understand, it's kind of like putting, you know, 30 pounds of meat in a 10-pound bag. You can't squeeze it up through there and if there's a, if there's a fire emergency, where are you going to put the cars? And if there's a backup coming off the train and the train is stopped and it's coming up and you have weather like this, how are you going to get, how are you going to get a first responder through to the hospital? How are you going to do it?
They go in the opposite lane, I mean, they go down.
Right, but not, but not if it's coming down, not if there's more, and I, I'm sorry, respectfully, and there's traffic peak coming down the other way because we have a spike and backed up further? I just wanted to see how you're doing it.
First of all, to address the peak peak or the spike.
I know, that's what I'm like.
To address that, it's, and I'm not, obviously I'm not a traffic engineer, but it's my understanding that you, you really don't responsibly design in every condition for the peak peak. That's like, you know, Christmas time, you know, and all of a sudden you have a, so you don't design and construct.
Right, but we're looking right out a little window is what we're talking about right now.
Well, that's fine. And it's a good question about how would that actually work if you have an emergency? I still don't, if I may, I still don't understand the statement that, you said that if you don't construct the left-hand turn, that even with doing, as a consequence of doing the right-hand turn, the existing traffic condition relieves from an F to a B or C on the left-hand turn?
It's just the right wing turn.
The reason for that.
Does that include the extra traffic for the retail opening?
Yes.
At 100,000 square feet?
Yes.
I got a quick question. Is there, is there any way, I mean, all of us who take that road know what it's like now and it's a problem now. Is there any way to construct that left turn lane? This rock wall appears to be taking a lot of time and prevents the left lane, the left turn lane from being constructed. Is there any way to do something short of a rock wall? Maybe bring in some cinder blocks or something, I don't know. But that it will allow a left turn lane to be constructed sooner rather than later and then deal with the rock wall in the spring?
You could drive a pile wall. I mean, just go in there and grab the temporary retaining wall using piles, sheet piles.
Another question, Rob, might be, as we go up north on 117, this perhaps is a DOT question and maybe a town question, but even now, when people are stopped at that left-hand turn lane, sometimes people will pull off onto the shoulder, it's like a big rut there. If we fixed up that rut and put in temporarily a little half lane or something so people could still proceed. If we fixed up that rut and put in temporarily a little half lane or something, so people could still proceed, um, northbound, is that something that the town can do? Is that something that's required to get a DOT, a DOT permit? Um, can that be done on a temporary basis? Again, coupled with what Rob has suggested, we're looking at trying to figure out Band-Aids that we can, we can apply here to, to get some relief.
When he does left turn, when he does left turns making left, out of the way the straight traffic somehow, some, somehow, we gotta get those cars out of the way.
Right, like paving the shoulder?
Yeah, you know, you know where that rut?
Something to get those. Dangerous.
Something to get those left turn cars out of the way.
Well, I think.
Yeah.
Excuse me? Felix? Felix, I'm sorry. So, and to address your question, it, it seems to me that we don't have to wait for warm weather to build a retaining wall. There are different ways to build retaining walls, and you can go, I'd see, you, this is used in construction all the time, right? You use sheik filing in order to build a base.
Very great, we, we, we can build a wall.
So can we do that?
And, and, and we've said that, that, you know, weather permitting, that we can continue to, to, to build that wall.
But what, what, you're saying it's the paving?
Yes, the paving, there's, there's no.
Nobody's paving this time of year?
We're not, we're not permitted by the DOT to pave.
After what time?
Uh, well, the plant's closed December 21st.
So you do something else?
So 1/21st, December 21st.
Well, this is, this is like November, this is November 1st.
But our focus in terms of, you know, in, in terms of what our analysis was, in terms of the safety and life safety, was to get the right turn lane. And we're pushing that.
So you can't do both at the same time?
I, you know, it's, there's drainage structures that need to be put in for the wall before that, that, that take, you know, much, much longer to do. We can't put the wall in without putting the drainage structures in first.
So.
Can't order the drainage structures until the DOT gives you a permit number, which we got yesterday, so we ordered the drainage structures yesterday, which allow us to complete the right turn lane.
So, I'd like to, to suggest that, that maybe before we act on anything we're not gonna do today, that we have your best plan for getting this left turn lane constructed with the wall and the drainage, and the soonest you can do it, and the details for that, so we can review it.
Even if it's a temporary wall, just something to, it doesn't have to be aesthetically pleasing, we just gotta get those left turn, those cars wanting to make a left into another space, so cars that are going straight can proceed straight.
Lou, could I ask, put you on the spot, I'm sorry, and maybe you'll not be prepared to answer the question, because you haven't done the analysis yet. But does it sound reasonable, and if you're not comfortable, by all means, don't answer. Does it sound reasonable that a right-hand southbound turn onto Roaring Brook is going to alleviate the concerns that we're addressing here, and make a B, a C, whatever it may be from an F, in terms of that intersection and its impact on the northbound traffic on 117? And again, I know you haven't done your homework yet.
We'll have to take the fifth amendment, just. I think there is a benefit, there would definitely be additional green time, I just don't think it, it's enough to handle, um, having one lane that's a shared left and through. There's really no room to have even a temporary left turn lane, even if we wanted to operate it with police. So this is a very difficult, uh, intersection to operate, especially during, uh, the period where all of that is going to be open at the same time. So, again, without detailed information.
Certainly.
I do agree that additional green time from the southbound approach to the northbound approach would help, but if you add additional left turns into that mix, and significant amount of left turns, that's something that I'd like to look at in a little bit more detail.
You guys gotta figure out how to deal with left turn lane, honestly, I mean, listen, I, I go to bat for you guys, you know, when I can, but you gotta figure out how to get that left turn lane in.
So, so here's the. Cuz the problem too, one quick second, with the, with the additional green time, you know, we're talking about 117, but don't forget we have Roaring Brook Road, and with the mitigations there, with the train station, with the train crossing, we have people backed up all the way from Roaring Brook Road to 117. So even if you have a longer green, that, that means you're not getting people off of Roaring Brook Road faster, or, and you're gonna end up with a backup there too.
Do, do, we take the green time, what happens is, there's a green time required for the southbound direction today. Concurrently, we run the northbound direction, but when we run the northbound direction, the left turn is stopped because of the southbound traffic. So what happens is, in this particular case, we don't take time off of Roaring Brook Road, that's what it is today. But we do take time off the southbound direction and give it to the northbound, it's almost as if it's exclusive. So the northbound direction is running longer green than the southbound direction, like it's giving you a greater time to make the left turn, to make the through, et cetera. We're not sucking time away from Roaring Brook Road as it does today, so we're not, we're not impacting that particular movement.
So we're moving the road over.
I'm, I'm, I'm only talking about 117 and the allocation of green time on 117.
So, Rob, this is, forgive me, this is your meeting, and I'd like to.
It's not my meeting.
No, it's joint meeting.
It's all.
Definitely not my meeting.
All right, but it's Bob's.
Go away, Rob.
No way, no way.
It's a gift.
It's actually.
And to your suggestion.
Wasn't my.
No, it's not my meeting.
Nobody wants to.
It wasn't.
If it was my meeting, we'd be operating a little bit differently.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
And to your suggestion, what I would, what I would suggest is when we have the meeting with emergency services, we start looking at what can be done in that particular case, would you spec to the left turn movement? Uh, and to handle the emergency vehicles in that particular.
So, in the, I'm, I'm sorry, Bob, just, I, I, I think that, for my purposes anyway, I think that we can move on, and that's probably not true for everybody, but at, at a minimum, I'd just like to be sure that we understand that we're asking from, uh, in this case, it's Felix, that we're asking from Summit Greenfield, that they provide us a, a quickest possible using every technique they can think of to get this thing built before the December 25th asphalt plant shutdown, or whatever that date is, and be able to defend that, and have our traffic engineers look at it, have our, our technical staff look at it in a critical way that gives us enough time, not deliver it on December 24th, gives us enough time to review it, and be sure that, and I think here, the deadline for this is before December 12th, because that's when you want the TCO. I think we need that, and for the sake of emergency services, and for the sake of just the background traffic and the peak peak and all of that stuff.
And while keeping pedestrian movement, uh, in mind as well. Because hopefully, we get people walking to the site too, which would eliminate cars, but if you're gonna have some weird slip lane, you wanna make sure around that curve, that, that anybody crossing anywhere near there by the high school is gonna see, will be seen.
Well, you have, we've seen, um, you know, the east roadway closed a number of times because of construction issues. Can we get some sort of assurance that during this time, that you'll be finished with that? And that will be open, because that's gonna relieve, uh, traffic also on that southbound turn? So if we can have that as a condition, you have to tell us if it's, if it's workable for you guys on the construction side, or that's gotta stay open.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm sorry, on the east.
The old Reader's Digest.
The Loop Road?
Yeah. From 117.
You mean on, on the interior?
No, no.
The main entrance, the, the south entrance to the site, the south entrance to the site.
On the interior.
The entrance, the entrance, yeah.
Bob, we're confused what you're saying.
On 117.
The west entrance, I think.
The 117 entrance.
The main entrance, the main entrance.
This is the entrance.
That's already, that's already finished.
Which is locked off for construction.
As long as it's finished.
It's all paved.
Okay, it's been closed, you've been doing stuff.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
It's been closed cuz of them doing.
Yeah, no, all our, our three entrances, which include our brand-new entrance across from the school, are all completed.
Complete.
And have been.
That's correct.
Paved, absolutely. And, and so all of those will function, and as somebody pointed out on the site the other day, some people will be coming off and taking a shortcut through the property, or things, was it you, Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah, so those, everything inside the house, we, we had control over, we've hit all our deadlines. Once we get outside the house, we were good on.
Well, this is on the edge of the house, so it's.
Right, but we got all Roaring Brook Road done, we got the school done, all within our control. When we went over to the state, that's where things, as you remember, the roundabout and the T-intersection, it was basically deja vu all over again. And now we will be able to finish the right turn lane prior to the opening of Whole Foods, assuming we get, are allowed to open it. So, my, my, my concern about the TCO is that it's not just for this intersection, unless I'm mistaken. Once you have a, a certificate, certificate of occupancy, uh, there's the request for relief on the other things. The other things are embedded, that are on this matrix, are embedded in that, in that certificate, is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Those conditions were conditions that the planning board had set, town board had set, that had to be satisfied prior to the application of occupancy. And relief is being requested from?
Or sanitary sewer for bonding.
All of that's, all that's.
For demolition, for trails, the greedy lights been taken, let me just, you, give me a second, Andy, I'm just gonna, for the greedy light 117, that's what we're talking about now, the greedy light's been done, 117, but there are these other items that, unless I'm mistaken, are still open. And we don't even have bonding in place yet for those things. It seems to me that maybe we ought to require the bonding before we give relief temporary TCO on those items.
All the items on the matrix, except those in Mark's letter, will be complete by December 10th.
Right.
By when?
By December 10th.
By December, all of these.
Yes, all, except for the ones that, in the letter.
I thought Mark was adding back some others.
Well, we're gonna.
It was.
We are, but we expect those to be done by.
I, I think for the board's information, staff had spoken with the applicant's council last evening. We were concerned about the number of items not in the most recent correspondence, the conditions, those conditions about bonding. There's other conditions in there that are really administrative. Not only are they administrative, but they involve board review, approval, and certain steps that town have alerted the applicant. Does not seem like there is enough time, enough board meetings, enough everything before December 10th, before December 12th, to have relief from. So we said to Mark, we want you to talk about them today, in the sense that we need to see where they are when they're there. So the town has to feel comfortable that there may be other conditions that are not satisfied, that are part of this discussion as well, as far as issuance of that TCO.
That matrix, that matrix should have a column that says satisfied by December X, relief requested. For every item that's listed as a condition of issuing a TCO.
Okay. Assuming we allowed you to work, assuming we allowed you to work through the night, could you have the capacity to do that?
Uh, there are restrictions, you, we can request from the DOT to work, you know, in the evening hours.
So that's a whole process to get their.
And John, you have more experience in that than me, I, you know, it seemed in our meeting yesterday with the DOT that they, they would be okay with that, but there's, there's, there's procedures to follow in order to have that approved.
How, how long the turnaround is that?
I, I don't really, I don't have the answer, John, do you have a?
Seems to be after work yet, 9:00, 11 o'clock.
As long as the town's okay with it, plus working within the roadway. Normally, the restrictions for work with DOT is just when they're inspected, but since we, you haven't inspected a resident's DOT on site.
Right.
Uh, we can do night work, but usually the restrictions for night work is usually within the town.
So assuming I'm not speaking, you have to tell them, assuming we could, 2:00 in the morning, you can be out there, there's no traffic.
Oh, I love.
I also think that residents perhaps would be upset.
You know, I understand that too, it's also valid too, we don't want.
Getting that left turn lane is more important.
Right, well, exactly.
Right.
So is that something we would have to go back and consider and come up with a request?
We're, we're, we're already on board.
Yeah, no, no, no.
What we should do is, we're gonna get an answer from our guy about the left turn lane.
Okay.
So we should just keep going through this conversation, we'll have an answer. I, I thought we had, I thought we had concluded the 117 as part of the conversation, you guys are gonna give us.
So, yeah, so, can I, so, can I try this, yeah, so let me recap, can I answer your question?
I, I'm concerned about the matrix, and everything else is the planning board's responsibility.
First of all.
Just that all hell broke loose, I'm sorry.
Hello, so what, what I think I'm hearing is, one, we will, we will update the matrix as has been requested by council, so that there'll be another, which will show you what, what anticipated completion. The issue is that the conditions 41 through, what's the number? So, and I'll give you the examples of them, that are non-traffic-related items, right, that are on there. We expect to have those completed, we, but, which is why they were not on, but to give you, give you a couple of examples. All existing sanitary sewer manholes dedicated to the town shall be re-lined, all existing sewer mains to be dedicated to the town shall be pressure-tested. All of these things, we expect all of those to be done.
By when?
But by the opening, which is why we didn't ask for relief on these items, okay?
By 12:10.
What, what we are doing is, what we've asked to do in consultation with the town is, there may very well be, you asked for bonding, we send you a bond, there's no town board meeting to approve the language of the bond, you have it in your hands, but it can't get approved in time for the 10th, you'd have to wait for the next town board, just giving you an example of something that could occur. There's a, there's an inspection of something that's, uh, a non-life safety issue of one of these items.
So can you just put that on the matrix and say, expected to be completed by, but relief requested if not, stop.
So, what we're showing you, yes, that, that, that's. Well, originally, what we did originally is, we did not ask for relief.
Now you can ask.
We are gonna ask, and we'll put it back on, and we're gonna state, expected to be completed. All of these things, items are expected to be completed, the discussion with town was, what if we haven't finished an inspection? So the answer is, again, that would still be in, even if you say yes, your building inspector still has to say, it's okay by him at that point. It just gives him authority, it doesn't.
So, in, in that, in that regard, if I may, and I'm, again, I'm not traffic, I'm not a legal person, but would it be prudent for us to, coming out of the box, get the bonds in place?
I think we've done most of those already, have we not?
I've, I've.
We've got a.
I've looked at all the numbers, I gave this to your team a month ago.
We have them.
We sent, we sent draft bonds, I think, over here.
We, we sent the. We sent draft bonds in for review, absolutely. Last week.
I didn't know about it.
They're in, they're all in.
Well, then can I ask of our team to get the bonds in place before we grant the TCO?
They're in. To our knowledge, or something.
So, so if, if I may, folks, if you send something to the town's legal counsel, the staff involved in that need to know what's going on. Bob had no idea.
I've been asking for the past two months, and I just got.
Okay, we'll get it over to him this afternoon.
As we know, good.
That's fine, well, I, we're trying, lawyers, communicate with lawyers, we, we'll CC.
That's her.
It's an affliction.
Every evening I was out, I said, please, you know, circulated to the attorney.
I signed the bonds the other day, I sent it to Janet.
Yeah, Janet said it Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, it's Friday. It's only been 48 hours.
I'll send it to you, Bob.
We did, we did send it in. So the point is, the point is, these things, we are, we believe they will all be finished.
That's right.
But we're just leaving some, we're just asking to leave some flexibility if for some reason, one of these, for your own review.
But reasonably, these things have to come in, in time, so that we can have a review.
Yes, and that's what we're.
And, and we need some, I think we need some dates on when we are gonna get the outstanding materials, or whatever it might be.
Well, the bonds are gonna be reviewed by town council.
Right.
And so they've been submitted.
The other items on the matrix.
The other items, yeah, you should get some information on when they're gonna be submitted. So we will, we will have to do that, and we'll get that to you early next week, we've gotta get dates out of, uh, construction. And what I'm also hearing then, in addition to that, what we, what we talked about was getting a meeting with emergency services and, and with school officials, so sooner we can do that, the better. And I would suggest that those meetings are traffic, your traffic are all there, and.
But before those meetings could take place, particularly emergency services, we need to have our consultants have time to do the analysis.
Well, how, look, you're in control of how you want it to do that, we're happy to have the, they can look at our analysis, but they also can be having the meetings with the emerg, it's up to you. Whenever you're ready for it, we're ready for it, and we will come to the meetings you schedule, you tell us when to come. And just while we're talking about process, we've, I've discussed with the planning board chairman, the desire, uh, to, um, schedule a public hearing for the fourth to discuss this.
And I just wanted to reiterate too, cuz I didn't hear anybody recapping this, that there's going to be an action plan developed for the soonest possible implementation, even if it's temporary, the left-hand turn lane. And that, that would coincide with the, with the, um, closing of the paving plans on December 21st. And if that can't be done before December 12th, can we have personnel monitoring that, that intersection from the, from, if it, if we do go ahead with an opening on, soft opening on the 10th, a hard opening on the 12th? Can there be traffic personnel in place? Because it, the, it charts though, that 25% of the traffic is expected to come through that left-hand turn lane to go to the site. That's a significant amount of traffic, a significant increase in traffic, and as everybody said, the, the intersection doesn't work at the moment.
I mean, I think you've heard expressions from a number of board members about that, that concern. I think what was missing, at least in the initial submission, was any meaningful mitigation, other than the numbers, which may or may not be, you know, I'm not gonna comment on those, but I think what everybody's looking for is some meaningful mitigation.
I, you know, I, I came here really assuming that there was gonna be, you know, right turn lane and a left turn lane, albeit not, not 100% completed, and maybe not pretty, but, you know, at least be able to queue the cars that wanna make a left, not having a left turn lane is a big problem.
Nick, question, um, assuming that we said, okay, this is a go, and, uh, we give this waiver for lack of a better term, is there any liability on the part of the town that we have said you have not satisfied, but we're gonna let this move forward?
Well, we have a discussion in executive session, but generally, we're still gonna be, as Lou had mentioned, in ownership of that intersection until DOT accepts it.
Can I just, I just wanted to say one thing, if, as someone who does this in a lot of municipalities, TCOs are, are regular items that happen in other places, it's not something you've done. TCOs are regular items that happen in other places. It's not something you've done here before, and that's fine, you have a way of handling it, it all has to be finished, but the concept that wasn't brought up that could have been, and it has been done here in other places, is oftentimes, there is a phasing analysis when there are conditions of approval. All of the conditions don't always have to be finished at the time you're giving the initial opening of something, especially if there's more than just like one store, when there's like a whole center of things. And oftentimes, there's a phasing that says, we're gonna do, we need this much done to be able to open this many square feet, we need this much done. So my point is, you're not inventing something and doing something here that's not done elsewhere. You don't have to do it, but you do certainly have, in my opinion, a legal ability to do it, and it's done well over. So that's what we're...
The biggest draw to the site is gonna be the first thing opened.
I'm not, I'm not commenting on the traffic issues that you brought up. You were asking a general question of, do you essentially have authority to do things like this? And I'm just saying, they do.
Authority, no, no, no. It's a different liability question. No, right, that wasn't his question.
Yeah, it's a liability question.
It's a threshold safety issue.
Well, that's the first question, 100%.
There's also the capacity issue. I've lived through the opening of DeChico's in Millwood. And I gotta tell you, the first weekend, people were circling the parking lot for like days, trying to find, and that went on for about a month. Finally, it settled down. But I would expect that to be a problem in spades, I'm guessing.
You wanna just check it out, let's see the whole food.
Especially over the holidays. So, can I, this is, I understand a lot of people everywhere do things their own way, and the precedent is good to know, but let me finish. The specific improvements that we're looking for on this project, right, maybe could be different than the other references you're citing. In this particular case, this is our town, these items have been on this matrix since, I don't know, 2014 or something, or 2016, and they have not been taken care of. Now, I understand about the intersection. I'm talking about the bond, I'm talking about all those other things. And to come...
I sent the letter around to Felix and the whole team.
In defense of our staff, and in defense of everybody on the town side, we've been working with you guys. Every time you call a meeting, we do our best. We work overtime, they work overtime, we have special meetings. It's time to step up. If you want this from us, I think you have to finally step up and get these things done. We've tried to do it your way for like four years, and protect our responsibilities. Now it's time to get it done.
In fairness, I've been here three months. I wasn't here at the beginning. That's why you look so good.
Hey, listen, let's face it, Whole Foods, everybody's gonna be very excited for Whole Foods. I don't need to tell you, this project is taking a long time, and that just builds the excitement for Whole Foods, but the traffic has always been the number one, number two, number three concern. You combine those two things, opening Whole Foods without a left turn lane, it's a bigger disaster.
So I think we've had a good discussion on that issue. I think Beal's is going to go back and speak to his contractor and see what can be done. We're gonna continue to discuss that at the staff level in light of today's comments, but I think given the hour, there are a couple of other matters on the agenda, we should move on to the next topic. Okay. So Sabrina, you wanna, or does someone wanna talk to us about the auditorium parcel?
Randy?
Yep, he's got this here. Somebody's in the copy.
Yeah, he's putting it on the screen.
Does somebody need to be turned on?
Well, this is, there are concerns in relation to the auditorium and the construction that was occurring on the site, in relation to the berm that was in the parking lot. As you can see, the auditorium on the slide, on the screen, if you head north, the bottom of the screen is south, you'll see the proposed crosswalk, and then that area across the road was a berm. There was concern about access from the parking lot to the auditorium through that berm. In addition, if you look slightly to the left of the auditorium, there is a box. That was an electrical transformer that was placed there by Con Edison. And there was concern about the location of that transformer in relation to the auditorium. Lisa, do you wanna add anything to that?
Um, well, there are other concerns, like the road, and that we wanna put on the site, and certain mitigations to the auditorium as a whole, ADA parking, et cetera.
So, as you know, as you've seen in communication, there's a host of issues with the auditorium. The specific ones related to the construction project of this site, and kind of things that we've seen that are going in place now, and we have the ability to change, are the berm and the transformer. We have previously spoken to the applicant about giving us an access drive with ADA parking, so that we could access the rear of the building, particularly since the East Village applicant has closed off the rear access to the building. So Andy, do you wanna talk to some of the changes you've made based on the town's concerns and the communications?
And before you do that, just when you talk about that also, because I see this, what I don't see is kind of that cut-through with that walkway. Is the berm still there, the big high one that's there now, or is it lowered like it is in the other area?
So Lisa, what date did we see each other?
Last Friday.
Okay, so Tom, last Friday, I ran into Lisa and Bob and yourself on site, who told me that you were concerned about these two issues. Three days later, we produced plans and a fix for those, so.
Is that this plan?
Yes. So, we are, we try to be as responsive as possible, to Bob's, Seeley's point, maybe we messed up on a bond or something, but we're really trying.
Of course, just FYI, we did send a letter to you guys, like weeks before.
I don't read letters. I read texts.
Weeks before from Sabrina, from Rob.
I saw you what day, and what day did I come back with a fix, which by the way, I have no obligation to do. These were all approved, these were all funded, we built all of this, it's all in place, and you had an issue, and we were trying to address it. So I...
So when you talk about this, I just wanna understand, because you can't tell from a drawing.
Thank you for getting them to me so quickly, Felix.
I'm not gonna, I appreciate you getting it, but we sent you, excuse me, this letter month, at least a month ago. So, you know, you can talk to your folks who you're paying as to why they didn't get back to us sooner.
So I think I'm paying everybody.
Felix, can I interrupt here? Is this a different plan than you submitted to me the other day?
I don't know. Andy did them.
Because there's, the other plan that you submitted to the town the other day had handicapped access on it, from the, had a ramp on it, had the driveway access.
There were two pages, two sheets to it. This is the first of those two sheets. So the second sheet showed the handicap access.
So the one we saw was only one page. So do you have other, do you have other slides there?
I do.
Okay.
Whether you have a plan or not, can we talk about the berm for a second? Because we did meet out there. And I guess there's some issue as to whether or not it is approved, whatever that means. I guess it was on construction drawings, right?
Yeah.
But it was not on our approved site plan. And when we went out there, our issue was, actually starts to fold over into Toll Brothers. As we move further up the road, we have this proposal for a substantial wall above the plateau where the Toll Brothers buildings will go. And we've been expressing concern about the size, magnitude, scale of that wall, since we've seen it. And I think, Andy, it may range as high as 14 feet in some areas, maybe 16, 12, it's big. So 14, and one of the issues that immediately struck Tom and me when we were out there was, you have a dip in the road, and now you've got this berm, and the berm is clearly just excess, you know, construction soil and fill. Right away, we can almost take care of two situations. You can put your fill there, build up that road bend, thereby decrease the size of that wall, the scale, and we take care of two things at one time. You get to move your fill and berm, or, you know, excess soil, and we start to take care of a problem that's going to impact the next application. Because that has been a major issue with us, or at least maybe anyway, from the get-go. So the berm appeared, and when we saw Felix, we'd mentioned that even to Felix, and he didn't know where the berm came from when we saw him. And what was there, although we did see people furiously putting plants and trees in, as we were speaking about it. But I don't see any, I don't see what the function of the berm is. It provides a barrier to the pack. It visually, it actually makes the parking lot disappear, so people might not even know that the parking lot's there as they're coming down this area. It makes the corner very, very tight and small. So, you know, it's a shopping center, so you should see the parking lot. Where we put the ADA parking from there, that's another issue in terms of the pack. So by eliminating the berm, having it back the way it was before, where parking was right up, you know, fairly close to the roadway, and then moving all that fill down the road where that swale is in the road, helps to alleviate that problem. So, you know, we try to look at this, I know it's, these are two separate applications at this point, but looking ahead, I think we can help resolve that issue as well.
So Bob, I think there's a general, I think a general principle behind everything you said. And you and I never talk, so it's great to hear you say these things I actually agree with.
Law of average.
There's a general principle that I think that the planning board could take and ask the town board to embrace, which is that this really, the whole thing, really needs to be seen as one site. The relationship between the office, the retail, the residential, and on this topic, most importantly, that public building, and the functioning of that public building. And so far, and I don't know where to point fingers, they probably should be pointing at the planning board for not insisting to get more engaged in this, but we're at a point where we're drawing parcel lines for the, I guess, the purchase or transfer of this property to the town. And it seems to me that it hasn't been done in the context of all the things that the planning board worries about. And I don't know what the conditions of taking the property are. Are there any sort of cost easements with the Summit Greenfield property, or what will eventually be the Toll Brothers parcel for things like access? What are the responsibilities? Because that is, that parking lot across the road is going to be the parking lot for the auditorium. What are the responsibilities with respect to lighting, with respect to maintenance, with respect to security? Because the town has no authority on your property to take care of those things. And most important, and that's, I think that all those things are really important, and the infrastructure, you know, drainage and all that. And I assume that that's gonna be, maintenance of all that, I assume that that's gonna be somehow taken care of, but it seems to me it ought to be memorialized somewhere.
And it has been.
Okay, well, we haven't seen that?
Right, because the subdivision hasn't formally come to you for a complete review, but...
But the problem, I'm sorry, the problem is that subdivision is a separate piece to, is being given to us as a separate piece from the Toll Brothers considerations. Again, this is one, I'm sorry, let me just finish, and then I wanna hear what you have to say. This is important for us to get right for the functioning of everybody on the property, and our prime interest ought to be, right, is the town's interest. We have a responsibility to honor the developer's interest, and we're doing our best to put those two things together, but it seems to me that we are in a position, until today, with Felix's help, finally getting at those issues. But I wanna be sure we understand that it's something that is going to probably impact the approval of the residential subdivision. If we don't get this right, then I think that we're gonna have a problem with sort of working through all those things.
So Tom, you're, I mean, your...
Because, I'm sorry, because it does, it's not that we're just trying to be mean. We're trying to solve a problem that counts interest.
Well, the issue was that when it came time to address the auditorium, we were getting ready to tear it down. Listen, I'm thinking circa 2014 or 15, and so the town just said that first, we were gonna tear it down, then the town wanted it, but the town didn't know what they wanted to do with it. So Nick and I and others crafted an agreement where essentially, then it became that you wanted to occupy it right away. So we basically master leased it to you for a dollar. I think you were paying the electric, if my memory is correct. And then for an additional dollar, the same dollar, you got to take ownership of it, at which time, which I believe was going to coincide with the subdivision. So sometime between 2014 or 15 and 2018, you guys figured out what you wanted to do. You started to do it, and it started to evolve into its own organism, and that has a bunch of other associated needs and conditions with it. And I think Lisa's been on the front lines of that, in terms of what you're building over there, and what it's gonna go, what's gonna happen. During construction, we've been addressing the issue of trying to operate that theater and its requirements, specifically parking, while this site is in such a state of flux. So I think Lisa and PAC know what they want. We now know where it is. We now know that there's some things there that are in the way. We know that there's some other things that, gee, we wish we had known about, and we're trying to figure it all out today. But at the moment, you guys are still the less E, under a dollar a year agreement. We're still the owner, and we're trying to get to the place where you're the owner. Is that, did I...
No, that's correct.
Fairly, did I summarize my memory remotely correct?
Yeah, Lisa's indicating as well, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I think, to your point, some of the things that you all wanna do over there, or that you may do, and some of the costs that are associated with it, I think are properly adjudicated when we complete this toll application, because that's, it's all around toll, its sidewalks are around toll, all the rest of the things are around there, and that application is before you guys. And so I think you have an opportunity to talk about it. And frankly, what's held up our ability to complete the subdivision is the town trying to figure out how much land they wanted. So probably, a year ago, the town came to us and said, hey, we need some more land. So it's, it...
I recognize.
So that, so we wanna, we wanna, we wanna finish. You wanna finish, and I think we all can finish under a toll. But what we did hear is, Lisa, who I can't get to say thank you, was upset about the berm, was upset about the transformer, and having had some experience with Con Ed, I said, let's find a fix that doesn't involve trying to convince Con Ed to move it. So that's what we put up front.
That's great. So let's talk about the fix, except let me put the caveat in that when your history is correct, but embedded in that history is that you presented a subdivision plan for that residential which required taking down the auditorium. And...
Your memory is better than mine. I don't, okay.
I remember, because I'm the one who sat down and did the new subdivision plan that showed how that could be saved, you could do your residential.
Thank you.
And, well, nobody's...
Or no, maybe not thank you. Maybe not thank you. Lisa, would you thank Tom?
I don't say that, for my credit. I just remember the discussions we had. It wasn't a negotiation, but it was a discussion. And it occurred to me that actually, this is a win-win, because demolishing and removing that building is not an inexpensive thing. So I thought that this would be something that would be attractive to you, and certainly attractive to the town. And I would assume that that premise is still in place. Good. So now, with respect to the drawing, I was really disturbed by this berm. Now, my guess is that there was just a whole lot of fill that somebody didn't wanna move off-site. Let me, let me just finish.
Andy, come on.
Poor Andy, I'm sorry, Andy. I'll be done in a second. And what I'm looking at the drawing is, and the reason it's a problem is because it completely cuts off the visibility and access of this major public facility that we are doing our best to promote, from its parking, and from access, pedestrian access. So I see in this drawing, Andy, a cut-through, the berm that's out there. To me, that's not the solution to the problem. It gets people through, but unless I misread the topography on the drawing, it's still this big berm, other than the cut-through, that cuts off the auditorium from its parking.
So this is the office parking area. And I don't have a office set of drawings here, but the intention of the raising of the grade along the landscaped area that now borders the parking. You recall, before this was put in, you drove along this road, and it was just right adjacent to the parking. Only thing that separated you from the parking was a curb. So the intent was, in the creation of this internal road, the loop road, to provide some landscaping on this office-side parking, even before there was an auditorium here. So the intent of the raising of the grade with the berm was to provide screening from the parking, as we normally do from roadways. Now, admittedly, with the auditorium being saved, perhaps the berm could have been rethought, and that's what we've attempted to do here. And this drawing just addresses the walkway through the berm and the transformer screening. So let me, I have two more exhibits with that. And the berm at its highest point, 412 here, it's 408 here. So it's a four-foot, four-to-five-foot berm as you walk along the road there.
What about from the parking lot side?
From the parking lot side, it's higher, because the grade is going up towards the auditorium.
How much higher? What's the height?
Well, it's 402 here, 402 here. So it's 10 feet higher. And the intent was to separate the office parking from the road that was being used by everybody. So now, we can rethink that, because as you indicate, the auditorium is now been retained, and it has its own interests. So let me go to the berm first. So here's the berm.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing something because I'm on the phone, but when you say we can rethink this because the auditorium has been retained, does that mean, does that rethinking include just removing the berm?
Yeah, I mean, I think the suggestion, certainly, my suggestion would be, is we're now aware that this is a concern. It may... It may not have been planned correctly, given that the auditorium isn't placed. And Andy's got some temporary fixes. Maybe what we'll do is we'll address this relative, as we finish, as we work our way through the toll site plan approval, because it's a buddy.
So can I just ask you a question, which was the initial question, because I couldn't, I'm not good at reading the heights? You know, to the left, like where the, you just put the drive-through thing for Chase, where the ATM is?
Yes.
There's a little, there's an area in between the road and the parking with, you have trees, but it's very low. It's like a, I don't know, a little islandy area, which is exactly next to this. Why can't you just flatten this berm and make it like you did over there to make it cohesive?
I mean, subject to Andy, the answer is we can, but...
We can, we can shave it down further.
We'll just, we'll give you that with our toll stuff, and we'll look at it, and y'all can, I don't know. The town board's not too involved, and maybe you ought to come to the meetings as a member of the public and voice your concerns to Bob, and we'll address it there. And we'll just make it, that improvement will be done relative to the toll approving.
Yeah, but who knows, I'm sorry, but who knows when that's going to be done? I don't know that we want to wait until all of that's built, that's not going to be built for...
Well, maybe it'll be in a year to get it done.
So this is the view from the auditorium steps across to the office parking, where the berm, where the berm exists now.
How difficult is it to really remove the berm and just to lower the height? I mean, it's a couple of...
Guys, let's have one conversation, please.
It's not difficult. In plan, you know, we can lower the berm further. The idea, as shown in the drawing above, was to shave back the berm on both sides and allow the walkway to go through. There's not a visibility issue, it's clear. The intent is still, I think, valid generally to have separation visually from the parking lot to the roadway. With the auditorium there, perhaps it's a different balancing that takes place. So we can lower the berm, remove some of the earth so that you can see into the parking. Generally, in most conditions, you don't want to see into the parking, where there's not a safety issue. There's not a safety issue here.
Well, I, just to interrupt, I think there actually is a safety issue, because if you're now asking someone to walk with a five-foot berm, and let's say it's somebody even on a wheelchair, how are they supposed to see around it to see if there's traffic coming down that road before they step into the street?
By the time you get to the edge, the berm goes away. So it's no longer there, you're not in the middle of the berm anymore. You're at the edge, you're at the same grade as the walkway.
You're on the sidewalk.
It's a pretty high berm, if you're cutting a hole through it, which is essentially what this is doing. You're gonna have to look around it before you step into the street.
No, by the time you get to the edge, where you're going to cross.
He's shaking it back.
You're shaking it back. It's like hedges.
Well, it's not going to be a straight cut through the berm, it's going to be cut and it's going to be graded back.
One of you made the suggestion and...
So avoided the retaining wall, so the valley thing.
That's why it basically left our conversation closed.
We'll still get the separation. You want to have a little bit of grade separation for your planning, and we can...
I appreciate the willingness to look at this again, but I don't think we're interested in half measures. I, from my, no, no, I'm sorry, let me finish, because you said you're willing to lower it a little bit. Unless I'm mistaken, my feeling would be, get rid of it. Put a landscaped embankment from a little bit above the road level down to parking lot.
And do what Bob said.
Because then that'll stop a big block from the planning board, right, to the Toll Brothers site. You want it to make the retaining wall so high.
Oh, okay. Andy, I don't see that out of disrespect, I just want to get this moving, so I mean, you know...
Although you would need this walkway anyway, even if it's a flat area, you could do this anyway.
We can do whatever we all would agree to do during the toll site plan approval process. If you're asking us to tear the berm down today, we actually don't have the right to do that. That, where we can only build what's on the drawings, you would have to...
We can't unilaterally change the stuff.
We, we...
Maybe you can.
I believe...
It is on the construction drawings.
But it wasn't on the site plan.
I believe it's on the approved site plan. I don't have it today with me, I believe it was.
On the retail site plan?
No, it's on the office retail site plan.
It is, the berm is on the site plan.
It is bad.
We're not arguing. If this is what the town wants, we will do this, there does have to be a process, okay? We'll submit to the process. We think the easiest way to do it is through the toll, because that's what's there. What drove us, we have to freeze the lot, the land area, so we can proceed with the subdivision. That's what has been our issue up until, as that land area kept changing. Now that it's frozen, we can, we'll cooperate it if it's frozen yet.
It sounds like it's a separate application, dependent of toll to amend the site plan to adjust the berm.
As long as you don't call it segmentation, we'd even do that. But the other issue is...
We're not going to call it segmentation, we'd even do that.
But the other issue is, I think you've already changed the, in the field, the parking lot, right, curb and whatever. And I think you've pushed more soil on top.
We can just lower the earth that's planted on here, so that it's less of a berm.
Well, I think, but you need to also extend the parking lot back out toward the roadway, because one of the issues that we have is, that's where we probably would put the ADN parking.
No, we can't, we can't extend the parking back out to the road.
Okay, well, we'll talk about the other site issues when we get to them.
Yeah, because go to the other stuff. Andy?
Yes.
Did you do, do you have a graphic of the whole parcel?
I do. We spent 30 seconds on the kind of transformer. So here's our transformer, exposed to the road. We're required by Con Ed to have some clearance around the transformer so that if they can work in the event they have to get in there. But we believe we can put screen planting in front of the transformer and provide access from the side, from the side. So it's not a clear-on shot to the transformer. So this is the overall plan, it incorporates now those two elements here. This to be revised to lower the berm further, the screen planting, along with other improvements that have been in discussion with staff for a number of months now, including a new driveway, a 20-foot driveway that comes off the loop road to provide access to the rear of the auditorium. Three accessible parking spaces with a walkway that gets you to the front of the auditorium along an extension of the existing side walkway. A place to create a ramp at the stairs that now come off the loop road that would switch back to provide handicap-accessible grades to the main patio, entry patio of the auditorium.
Have you looked at the pathway?
The path of emergency access from the toll loop road.
Have you looked to the pathway to the south? There's an existing pathway that comes off the roadway, and I wasn't quite sure where the proposed landline would be. But there's a pathway that's already there, and that might eliminate or might be something we can use to supplement, yeah, on that side.
There is a still pathway on our side.
Just coming up, an ADA compliant pathway that essentially goes, from where it's, the words say existing trucks. It goes basically from there to the, to the, not the main road, to the Secret Service area.
The Secret Service is gone.
To that parking area right there.
But that parking area is gone, that's part of the East Village, that building is gone.
So that's not helpful.
Well, we have that area...
It doesn't have to be gone. No, that parking area, the problem is, is that's where they put the store.
Right, this is part of the...
Store management.
So...
This is part of the East Village.
Andy, if I can just get you up to speed on our conversations on site. Lisa and Bob and I, I don't know whether you were part of this or not, you were there when we walked around...
The whole thing.
The south side, I can't, this is not really working. The south side of the building, the side we're talking about now, the, right in there, thank you. The concern about that plan is that it requires cutting a roadway on the north side to get to a parking area for the handicapped and also to get to the loading for the, for the...
There is no parking area there.
Well, there's handicap parking.
Just like two spots, three spots.
Right. And as a consequence, the handicapped have to go from that parking, from the back of the building, right, around to the front to get into the building.
At the same level as the...
Right, but it's not your preferred way to have handicap parking. In any event, it just seemed to us a lot of construction to do that, when you could enter from the south side, build a roadway with handicap parking.
Roadway here.
Yeah, and handicap parking sort of right in here, and continue access around to the back, or have another way to get to... You can use, is there another door on this side?
There's a door here, but the main access door is...
The access door to the back of houses over here, and there's not another one here.
Well, and that door is actually appropriate for handicap access because it is level.
Oh, the low level.
Which door is it?
The one on the right side of the drawing.
No, has to be built up. It actually isn't flush, which flush is the front.
Right, and this is less than 2% to go from here to the front.
So the front of house is the high part of the auditorium, and the back of the house is low, so you want to bring handicapped in this way, right? Sabrina?
So, I'm sorry, Tegan?
I'm trying to follow up on your point.
So when we looked at the handicap access for, you know, the doorways and kind of the easiest approach to do minimal alteration to the auditorium for the handicap access door, we were looking at the door on the right side.
I know, that's because that's where the parking lot currently is for the loading and the only way to get handicap access, because otherwise you, the only way to get in is from the staircase in front. But actually, what we had been doing was using this Secret Service building and that pathway there, because that's significantly... I mean, that building's not there anymore, but it's much shorter, and the front of the building is actually, once you get on that, this level area, the patio, it's flat, no barriers at all, and that's, you know, obviously, to be able to bring somebody into the front of the building where the bathrooms are, where the upper entrance would always be preferred.
Yeah, correct.
As opposed to bringing somebody in the back of the building.
So do I understand from this that it's probably better for the handicap to come in at the front of the building?
Yeah, because that's always designed.
So when we walked around, we thought that this would be, first of all, you, I think the grades are already such you don't have to do much regrading, just have to put a, you know, severe grading like you have to do here to get a roadway in, and a parking lot right there. The other function, though, is getting to this door, and how do you get trucks and traffic back here? If, do we still have to do this road, is there another way to get back here?
No, not with the back entrance closed off, the black, the back access closed off.
And this is what, again, in our plan, in the plan?
Stormwater. It's just stormwater management for the East Village.
So you can drive over that?
Was it depression, isn't it?
It's not designed.
It's, no, it's not a depression, it's underground.
Oh, okay.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is that it seems to me there could be, I think, a better, more practical plan that would require figuring out a different infiltration system that you can drive over to get the trucks in this way. And secondly, that really solves an interest problem for the handicapped over here. The consequences are going to be moving this line in order to achieve those things. So I guess I'm saying, I'm not sure that the planning board is yet, to this extent we have approval authority here, and I'm speaking for myself, is really ready to fix on this lot line. And it's something that I think requires more discussion.
That's a big issue for us on timing, you know, that's a big issue for us.
In what way?
We've got to get the subdivision going, we've got to start, I mean, we've got to get Toll Brothers.
Right, and they're still going through an approval process here.
Right, no, no, I get that.
And they, and I think, unless I'm mistaken, they, unless I'm mistaken, and you know, Les can speak, Les, let me just, I'm sorry, this is intentional. Les can speak to this better than I can, Les. I'm not sure that the, that the number of approvals that need to be, that Toll Brothers needs to go through are such that this change can't be folded into that process. In a timely fashion.
In a very 35,000-foot level, every time we change a lot line, because of the complication of the toll approval, because of the requirement of a separate lot for each one of the residential buildings, because of the way we, this was because of the taxation issue, okay? Every time one of those changes, those other things change, and it just tremendously complicates, it just changes everything. Andy, you can speak to this better than I can, but that's what we've been struggling with, and it is, and it is slowing us down in trying to get, in trying to come up with all these other items to come out of your meetings and trying to respond to them.
Tom, sequentially, what you need to have is the master subdivision, then which will create the larger toll lot. And then that lot has to be re-subdivided for the toll subdivision.
Right, I understand that.
That's kind of the sequence which we haven't really followed. We got the site plan, but we don't have the lot created yet. We're trying to get the subdivisions to catch up, which means that the lot lines have to be established, you know, for the auditorium for us.
Right, right. And to, and suggestion that, I understand that the overall approval process is essentially holding you up from final transfer of property. I would imagine it wouldn't happen until the property transferred, that you made the effort to actually subdivide the parcel itself. And let me, right, so, right, so... I just, unless I'm mistaken, Les, I don't know how long it takes to change that line and to do the legal documents that get that in place for our review process, whether that holds us up, or whether our process would, could conclude sooner than that being done. I guess I'm suggesting it could all be done in the process of what we're going to write down.
Yeah, I think it can, I don't think we're going to conclude before it's done, but we're processing that site plan all along, even though the lot has not been created. We've been trying to get the other parts to catch up, which ideally they should at some point.
But if we're going to make any sort of change, obviously, this is the time when you would do it, because this is the time when the application is about to be filed. So, I mean, fairness to the applicant, we should really just figure out what we really want and what we need and let them, you know, proceed.
I agree.
It's just unfair.
It's fair to say that we're catching up on this.
Yeah, I understand.
The planning board is catching up on this.
I understand, that is actually correct.
We've tried to, in the planning of the area around the auditorium, the planning of the lines, we've tried to balance the different interests that have an effect on where the lines occur and how access the auditorium exists. We had the approved East Village PDCP provides for smaller auditorium parcel, which we've tried to push out the lines to accommodate a new access drive from the loop road, which it was thought made more sense than having shared access, occasional access to the rear from the East Village drive. So in doing that, we had a narrower driveway, which we've further expanded to provide some handicap-accessible space at the back and sharing the same drive as the service drive. The service drive will not be used that often, it's used to access. This accessible spaces will be used basically during performance. So it seemed to make good sense to share that access to a point that was basically level with the main level of the auditorium. Now, an alternate approach would be to bring accessible access in this side and loading from the other side, but that has a negative effect on the existing site plan of the East Village. So, yes, there's another way to look at it. Certainly if the Bedford Valley House was staying, that access could be shared by accessible parking for this building, but it's not staying. And that's within the footprint of the buildings of the East Village, not only the buildings, but the stormwater.
So I guess, you said negative effect, I guess I'd say there's a consequence to the site plan.
All right, that's one, yes.
I don't, I'm not sure yet it's a negative effect, and we won't know until we look at the alternative solution. So I think we ought to work to that as quickly as possible, and then come back and make a judgment about that.
We're following the town's guidance on the boundaries. We've expanded the boundaries beyond what they were thought to be in the initial idea of transferring the auditorium to the town.
Fair enough.
And as shown in the approved MFPD plan.
Fair enough. And like I say, we're trying to catch up on this, so we'd appreciate any cooperation we can get.
And, you know, honestly, this was sent to us to review internally, and, you know, we're still reviewing it. It may be four handicap spots instead of three handicap spots, we haven't finished that review yet. It may be four handicap spots instead of three handicap spots. We haven't finished that review yet.
Right. We, we appreciate it. Just for everybody that's in the room, when nobody's trying to give anyone a hard time, we're trying, you know, Toll is sitting here, their plans there, we do have a very tight. There, there are issues here, not only with where the drainages go, we have roadway issue, we have a whole bunch of things that you guys are very familiar with because we've appeared in front of you. So I just want everyone to know here, by moving the line a foot or so, it can have an enormous impact. So, we'll do it, we'll take a look, but expanding this even beyond where we've gone may be problematic for us. And I, you know, we're just letting you know, there, there comes a point where it really does have a major impact, so.
Yeah, it looks like moving the line south, I mean, you're gonna, it looks like you're gonna lose a building and you're gonna lose critical stormwater. I mean, it's a significant site plan change.
Well, it, it, my guess is you'll lose, you won't lose a building, you'll just move a building because I don't think you're gonna lose a building. You wouldn't want to lose a building, you can move a building because it's planned right now.
But this, this side is so tight, what, what we're saying is there's really not many options to relocate a building.
You've already moved one building over to the other end, end of the site, you can move. At the north end of the site, there's room to put another building, I believe. I, I may, I think I'm familiar with the site plan. So, the, again, I, I'm not trying to make light of your concerns, I understand them. All I'm asking for at this point is a quick version of what it is we think might be a better solution and then we'll all talk about the impacts of that. And I think that, Andy, you could work with Bob or somebody or Sabrina to sort of do a sketch of what that might be.
I can do that.
So then we'll move quickly on that if we can. We don't want to hold you up.
Okay, we understand. And also to the extent that, you know, we, whatever changes might result, you know, we'll work with you guys to, to figure out ways to make those changes. We have to do wholesale the, the.
Well, we'll do an impact analysis and see what we get.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I guess keep going. Or don't, you tell me.
Well, well, looking at the time and the other agenda items that are on here, you know, I'm gonna leave it.
These, these things have got a, a big frame underneath them.
I think a lot of these things can't happen until we figure out what we're doing with this. Yeah.
I told my wife.
And that's been the issue all along.
Felix, what about the gold green thing? Is this on the agenda?
We, we, we did put it there, we would, we'd appreciate if you would consider that at whatever your next meeting.
No, it's on there.
So, so, so here's the thing. We had had a logical conversation when we put this agenda together, understanding people's time this morning, their ability to sit here for the length of time that needed to sit here, as well as the work that needs to be done to get everybody to the point where decisions can be made. So, I'm gonna throw it out there, looking at the rest of the agenda, we think we have covered everything that needs to be done in relation to Chapel Crossing to get them to the finish line, whether it's happening before December twelfth or tenth, or happening before Toll Brothers gets their approvals. This is the world of changes that need to be made. Some of the changes we can put off until the new year, some of them you may feel the need to discuss now. So take a minute, look at the agenda and determine, and, and when I say agenda, look at everything before.
I'm sorry?
Before the third page.
Okay.
Okay, and if you want to discuss something now, let's discuss it. If not, I suggest we table it.
Well, the gold green, isn't that important Felix? Don't you need to like know if you're gonna?
Well, uh, we, if you guys can accommodate B two in your next meeting, it was a request of a waiver of the use restrictions for us to install a green dry cleaner, which is a service that was prohibited by virtue of the protection of the downtown.
Right, we have to petition for that.
So we have a tenant, his lease is already signed, but we don't have the right to install him. So that, that, that would.
Can I just ask one quick question about that? I think it was answered at some point, but I don't remember. They're not doing the dry cleaning on site, right? It goes off.
It goes off.
And we could tailor that to a, how, how much can we tailor that if we allow this dry cleaner, which would service the residents, the residential and, you know, we have too many dry cleaners downtown, I'm going to be honest with you, but, uh, how many, uh, how, how narrow can we tailor that exception? Could be green dry cleaner? Like allow green dry cleaner to retail?
My, my concern, and maybe it's an executive session issue, is there were other restrictions put in there that I, I would just worry, I don't want to open this and then it's gonna mean.
So these are classified and, and correct me if I'm wrong, these are classified under your zoning code as service establishments or personal service establishments. So, personal service establishments aren't permitted in this particular district. So we would have to amend the regulations to include those personal service establishments. I know that there were certain concerns about other kinds of uses that are classified as personal services establishments to just simply allow personal service establishments in the, in this district. So, we can put our heads together to come up with something that would tailor it a little bit better.
And we could do something with dry cleaners, which said, no, no, no cleaning on site. There will be a way for us to do it to take care of.
I just want to make sure it's not opening the door to nail salons and everything else.
I, I think we.
But you're also limited by size, no more than twenty-five hundred square feet.
I think what the applicant needs to understand is, is there a willingness by the board to look at potentially changing the legislation to allow something of this nature, period. And then let us, let us go through and see if we can create legislation that would fit this because there, what he is proposing is something that's different than, a different operation than a standard dry cleaning operation and, you know, you, the question is whether or not you want to consider it at this site.
Well, it's also, what you're also hearing from us is we don't want to open the floodgates. And, and what you're also hearing, I mean, the truth is also this green dry cleaner is somewhat consistent with the Whole Foods and the organic, and it's actually, it's, it's not a bad use as far as an image that you're trying to portray with this particular shopping center.
But is there actually really a thing as a green, as, like, is a green dry cleaner really a thing? Like, who's certifying that actually?
This, this, this guy's really a thing.
It's a thing, it's a thing.
It's colored green inside.
He's got a, he has a half a dozen of these operations, he's, this is his process. He's a good operator, I think, I think you've met him.
We would have to petition and we would have to bring him with us and we can have him describe his operation to you so you're satisfied with it.
No, that's good. The, the reason, I hope I'm not saying I shouldn't, but, you know, we're trying with Chapel Crossing to mitigate, you know, the impact down here. And one of the reasons people come here, as you've seen in our town, we have many dry cleaners and nail salons.
We have the cleanest clothes, the best nails in Westchester.
So the challenge is, the challenge is coming up with some.
Can I just finish talking? So while I'm not necessarily against the green dry cleaner and I get the reason to have it up there, I want to make sure that allowing that is not going to, like Rob said, open the floodgates to allowing other reasons that we're protecting people, making sure they come down here to then just go there for everything. So that's what I'm concerned about. So I have to make sure that there's a way to go back.
Right, but we, we hope you would balance our, we need to get site up and going and we're, and this, right now the retail is getting worse and worse and worse, you know, in, in the world, so.
But I think with fairness, what the applicant is asking for now is this dead on arrival or is this something you're willing to entertain and consider?
To consider, we'll petition for it and we'll have a conversation about it.
Right, and addresses your concerns.
I think, I do.
So I think back to your, Sabrina, back to your question on the agenda, I, I think everything else we can, we can, first of all, Casey has sat here for a long, long time, was there something on here that?
He's meeting after.
Oh, okay, I go, I, I'm just trying.
Give another meeting after this.
I have people I answer to, Casey's one of them, I was just kind of covering my own rear end here. You didn't probably know I answer to you, did you? But anyway, was there anything on, before I go ahead and say agenda wise, or?
I don't think so. I mean, we had the, a couple of things on here, I don't know if we want to go through them at this point.
I had a, I totally wanted to, we, we got out of here.
Which one is that?
It's on A East Village PDCP changes.
Which, which one?
On page two of, well, actually I have an old agenda here.
Item E.
So, you're seeking nine additional bedrooms, which would then bump two bedrooms to three bedrooms and initially also, when this was initially approved, I believe it was no basement but slab, and now you have a basement which is going to become, whether we all want to close our eyes or not or acknowledge it, bedrooms or some other space. And then below it, it says eleven additional bedrooms, I don't know if that's two to three also. My concern is not just more people, more kids in the district potentially, and then just competing with the market of three bedroom homes that existing already here in the area. So, I'm very concerned about that and why, other than dollars and bottom line, why are we considering that increase?
The eleven is not Toll Brothers. The eleven, so you understand, is the existing, already built, uh, what's the number?
The sixty, sixty?
It turned out that that was built with eleven bedrooms over the affordable, that over there, so that's not Toll Brothers.
That's a cleanup, that's a cleanup.
So that's just a cleanup of what was already built and already exist.
So that addressing A and that, which is the nine bedrooms, what's the basic?
That's the toll, that's the toll. Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, so we, we worked with the planning board on addressing the corner across from Lifetime Fitness. There's a, seemed to be a great change from street level Lifetime to the auditorium, sixteen feet. There was concern that those units across from Lifetime need to be street level and we needed to essentially step units up to meet grade at the auditorium. What that did is create nine units that need to be drop slabs. Basically, there needs to be an elevation difference of about four to five feet from the garage elevations to the first floor. And the two bedroom product is essentially, it's a, it's an empty nester product and an issue for buyers to have to deal with seven or eight stairs from the garage to the first floor. So, in working with the planning board, we thought it was reasonable to request that those particular units be three bedroom. I know Andy did an updated environmental analysis to look at school children, sewer water, based on the additional bedrooms, and I don't think there's any additional impacts, so.
But the planning board, in my opinion, the planning board is satisfied with it. And they think it's better for the site plan than, you know, okay, they're the ones working on the, the residential.
Yeah, I think that's still under review by the board.
But I'm gonna be guided, I'm gonna be guided by that.
Something the town boards need, go in and need, this is gonna have to approve, so we could just bring to your attention.
Is there a way, just?
I'm gonna look to the planning board for guidance, so.
Um, I get what you're saying, that makes sense, but is there a way then to turn existing three bedrooms into two bedrooms? You're not increasing bedroom size?
We prefer not to. I mean, we have other drop slab conditions that we've allocated for three bedroom units. It's, it's an elevation change because, you know, for instance, where we have that high retaining wall access road across from the office, we're stepping those units. To reduce the height of retaining wall to get up to stormwater, so there are other conditions we allocate to the three bedroom product.
Tom had spent a lot of time working with Toll, trying to get the grades where he wanted them to maintain the village and to tie the corner into the auditorium, into the balance of the property. And so when that went on, they were moving buildings up and down and so, as Casey just said, they had to change those units. And relative to your, James at Planning Board has spoken at great lengths about the basements, they're not, they're not set up for bedrooms, they don't, they're not allowing people to put bedrooms in there.
Allow is a relative term.
But, but it's also, they did restrict them, it's, and it's not the tendency of what they experience in these type of communities, and the typical people go, but your points will take and I'm sure there's somebody who's gonna go ahead and turn it into something, but that was not the intent, uh, in terms of, in terms of that regard. But these guys have, Planning Board and Toll have spent a lot of time on these issues, but now it will ultimately, I guess, come back in front of you because we need to get Town Board waiver on the bedrooms.
It requires your, your.
Well, I'll, I'll circle, I'm gonna show we all circle back to the planning board and your thoughts and alternatives possibly.
Right, and on this agenda, on this agenda item, is, is there a timeline for this? And we're talking about D now, five D on page two. This is something that needs to be resolved before the planning board finishes its application.
I, I think it's, I don't, I believe the answer is we, we can't get approval from the planning board without a waiver from the Town Board on some of these issues, so the answer is yes.
We're waiting for you. But, but to your point, Tom, it does, if, if there are going to be any changes because of the auditorium, which is again a separate issue, but it really isn't a separate issue, we would prefer to, you know, look at all the stuff globally.
So at some future point, we'll work with the Town Board to go over the specifics here. So that they can then, so these guys can then get your okay on all this.
I think that has to happen sooner than later.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Which point, were you talking about, Tom?
Well, I'm talking about D in particular, we're talking about now B one, the nine units, I think. That the, the planning board has, I think, essentially been working through, and there's no final approval yet, but I think Bob raises a good question that this might impact the site plan, therefore impact the number of bedrooms because every time we talk about units, it seems the number of bedrooms are in flux again.
Yeah, there's some other issues obviously that we're, we're talking with Toll on, I, you know, it has nothing to do with, yeah, the retail.
So the sooner your team helps us sort of figure this out, we can then come to some conclusion to recommendations to Town Board on that.
What we have is though, we have, just to bring the Town Board up, up to speed on this, is the applicant has come in with some changes. And staff has been working with the Town, with the applicant to try to figure out what those environmental impacts are from those changes. In short, some of those changes are that the overall size of most of the town homes is larger than what you looked at and what you approved, but the Town Board, in its past configurations, approved in a conceptual manner. When we, when the Town Board approved it with, I guess, Plan Board input, you approved basically, you know, the sized town home. They were basically all at that point considered to be on slabs, they're now coming forward with basements. It's not so much who's gonna live in the basements, one of the issues that we have that's kind of, we're, we're working with, with Steve Coleman, is we have some berms that are being created. And to a certain extent, the berms are being created because we're, we're going with basements. This excess fill is creating the need for putting, you know, it could work to construct berms. So, this is all a moving situation right now, but in, in addition, you know, Bob's always had issues in terms of sightlines and driveways and the drive pads, all these kinds of things have changed because the configuration of the homes is still ninety-one, right? No changes. Still the same, but because they've grown in terms of size and because they've got basements, what's happening is we're now starting to see the details of, of an application based on market-driven forces that Toll Brothers is expert at, but we're being asked to consider these changes and what those impacts are and then we'll bundle that off to the Town Board because, because nothing can happen till the Town Board makes its changes.
You know, I'm concerned, when you talk about market-driven changes, I'm also just concerned about all the three family homes that exist already, maybe a different person you're marketing to, but it's just adding more to flood that market with comparable-sized homes, and as you've mentioned many times, the shiny new toy with immediate access to shopping, et cetera. I don't know that impacts.
Yeah, the, the approval is primarily two bedroom, so right now I think the mix is seventy-one two bedrooms, twenty-three bedroom. So, it's still gonna be favorable, number two bedroom.
That may be true, but you gotta still find more units, but I'm, I'll wait for you guys to review further, thank you.
Okay, so, I, I don't think there's anything else we have to talk about on the agenda. Our, if, we need to finalize the land on the auditorium has, has been a critical answer. I, I, that did move again, did it two minutes ago, was it, is it now finalized?
No.
No, why?
No, they want a new plan drawn up, showing.
That's good to talk about, Tom's concept, and we're gonna look at it and see if it's something we can live with and if it's something that they desire.
Sorry, I, I don't want to take authorship of that. I support it, but I'm.
Well, you're the one who said we weren't being responsive, so I have the right to.
I should have stayed home, you know?
So maybe it's the twenty egg sandwiches.
I just want to say that there were three of us on site, right? Who thought that this was a good idea.
Why don't we, just, I mean, to draw up a consensus with that. Oh, forget about it, I was gonna talk about something else. I was gonna talk about the auditorium, you were talking about.
We were, we were, this is, we are talking about.
You're right.
You're like me, you can't text him.
Exactly. Why don't you, I wasn't a hundred percent sure, why don't you, maybe Tom and Lisa and, and maybe, I don't know, Bob, what's he gonna, Bob, a couple of members from the Town Board, a couple of members from the Planning Board, Ash just out.
I'd be happy to sit down in a room and just draw some stuff up.
Yeah, well, that's Lisa, she's.
Yep, I do want to do.
I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble hearing, can somebody just be sort of concise with what the next steps are with regard to the property boundary?
Rob just said we'll get a couple of people from the Town Board, a couple of people from the Planning Board and a couple of people from Summit Greenfield together and figure it out.
And staff, with Jeff.
And staff, obviously.
Jeff, Jeff, Ty.
So is there, is there something that's going to be done prior to that conversation where you sit down and figure it out?
No. We're gonna arrange whose meeting.
It's gonna be a working session.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not gonna be. You'll, you'll need Andy.
Tom will draw, we'll figure it out. We're just like, you draw, we'll figure it out, Andy will then redraw, submit it.
It's like all time?
And then we'll talk about it.
Hopefully it goes quicker.
Yeah.
It'll tell you in paper.
So another Town Board has one additional topic on its agenda, so I think we have a breaking point with SG that we can move on to the rest of the joint planning board.
My breaking point, what do you mean?
Well, yes, that's, we're, that is in the eye of the beholder.
But you have enough time to leave the room.
Yes, because I gotta train myself. Yes, 'cause I gotta get to train myself pretty shortly. So Team SG, thank you.
Oh, well, Team TV, PB.
Team NC.
Well, you see, and you're gonna get in touch with us on those, those meetings, the one you just discussed and the other one.
Okay. Very quickly, because I know we're supposed to actually get to work, uh, pay our taxes. We've had Sabrina and Greg, Sizari, put together a, a great RFP for us, for you guys to consider as we start to take, you know, take our first steps down toward the downtown. You know, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I just got to it last night, but it took a while to herd old cats and get information. And it's very important that Dick and Greg and Sheila and Tom are here. I tried to put this together as a summary of what I thought were the thoughts, we've had some corrections and editing. So you have a memo here that I just sent out late last night, take a look at it. The thought being that this would, might have some elements that we could either substitute or blend into the RFP. Uh, I, I, I tried to make it very clearly understood that there is not unanimity on this from the standpoint of the Planning Board. Greg does not agree with it, I'm sure there are elements that Sheila doesn't agree with, Tom doesn't agree with, that Dick doesn't agree with. So I'm gonna shut up and let them talk, because it's important that the Town Board hear everything on it. Cause Sabrina and, and Greg did a great job putting this all together, and, um, look, we're all, we're just trying to, good, intelligent conversation, not wordsmith it and go from there. Greg's on.
Does he have any comments?
Greg, uh, yeah, you wanna talk first, Greg, or is that okay, or?
No, everything you said was, was fine on me, and, uh, I, I don't think I need to talk first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with everything you said.
Except my, except my memo.
No, 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 not that, there's one thing, I gotta, you know, I was, this, this really, Sabrina did the lion's share of the work on this. I was just in support of her, so I don't want people thinking it was my doc. It was really all her hard work, and I just kinda gave comment, supported, and gave thought, so.
It was, look, it's a generic document, Sabrina knows this stuff, this is a professional document. What we suspect, some of us suspect, is that we've done an awful lot of this work already with the comprehensive plan, let's not redo it. Let's get to the real crooks, and that is let's start giving strategic information to the consultants. What do we want the Chappaqua hamlet to be? And what can we do, what can it, um, what can it support reasonably, and, and go from there? So others can articulate it better than I, but I, I think that's really where we wanna go, is try to make this as expeditious, as cost-efficient as possible. Hate to see us lose another year, year and a half, nine months, whatever it might be, by looking at or having a consultant start to draw up stuff that we've really looked at, uh, pretty hard, very hard. Uh, and the committee's looked at very hard, and we have a document that really supports us.
So, um, Greg, I know that, um, cause we share a professional experience, that you spent your life, your professional life responding to RFPs, and that's how you make your living, and I'm the same way. And so my comments are in that context of reading RFPs, responding to them, and some are put together, uh, uh, in ways that sometimes are not as clear as they need to be. And what tends to have, and I'm also in the, in the, in the experience of actually receiving proposals. And when you, when you get a proposal, when you get proposals that seem to sort of miss each other in terms of the scope or the timing or the intent of the issuer of the RFP, it creates noise in the process and creates confusion, um, and it's hard to sort of get the apples and apples together. So my comments have to do with seeing, seeing if we can take the good work that's been done here and really focus it to what it is specifically that we're looking for and, in a way that makes that clear. And I, I think that the process of actually getting to any development that we may wanna see, there's, and what it looks like, there's still no, I think, consensus on that, because that's a long process. But in getting there, there are like, there are like the five questions, and it's sort of like journalism, the who, what, when, where, I forget what the other Ws are.
Why?
And how, but that's not a W. So in any event, uh, in this process, we're going down, the objective is to get to some conclusion for getting development downtown that serves the math, the comp plan. There are the five questions, what, we wanna have built, how much of it, how it's built, in other words, the shape it takes, where and when. And it seems to me that this RFP is for the first two things, it's the what and how much. And that's under the, um, under the umbrella of a moratorium. And I, and I think it's the obligation, I, I don't speak for the Town Board, but it seems to me there's an obligation to get the what and how much figured out quickly, under the umbrella of the moratorium, in service to the people who, who have businesses down here in service of the town. So it seems to me we wanna be very clear about focusing on those two things. The how, the where and the when are something that come in the next step. When you issue within a development RFP, and you have developers coming in and say, well, I wanna do this there in, in, in response to your developer RFP, or I wanna do that over there. And so you'll get, you'll get to that process later. One question about the where is that, is whether you actually wanna fold where into this RFP, to begin to focus on areas within this RFP. And I don't know whether legally it's, or politically it's right to do that, because then you are in the process of this RFP study excluding property owners, and under this umbrella of moratorium, you're excluding future.
Right.
Uh, property owners from developing their property, and boxing them out of the development capacity that's available. So I wanted to, and I'm actually the, I have to claim authorship of the, of the outline, which started the development programs, phase one, phase two, draft zoning preparation, and three. This is, is an alternative way to organize the language in the RFP. And it seems to me there are two essential questions you wanna start with. What's the development opportunity? And we've talked to the Planning Board, and I think in the, in the comp plan meetings, about, um, the need for, for the hamlet to position itself in the evolving sort of marketplace of why people go to town centers. And the notion was, it's not going to be adequate just to say that we're gonna end up with three more dry cleaners, or we're gonna end up with another coffee house. That there needs to be some notion of who we wanna be. Peak Skill's been pretty good at that, uh, some of it was by design, some of it was just as a consequence of other, other things. Jacob Burns over in Pleasantville has helped enormously, I think, um, put that town center on the map. I don't know whether entertainment is in the mix here, uh, we already have the Wallace Auditorium, which I think is a wonderful success. But I think we need to understand, I, I, I think we need to understand what's gonna make this town a place people wanna go, rather than just more retail. And that's something that the right consultant can help you with, there are people who specialize in this. And while you're doing that as part of the, the, the study, you also at the same time, I think, need to figure out what your development capacity is, how much. So there's the what and how much, and the how much, I, I don't think that needs a, a really big, long study. I really think that we know enough about the downtown and the traffic capacities and the sewer stuff, and, you know, Bob's been eloquent on this point. We really already know a lot of that, there's a lot of information that just, can just be turned over. And within a reasonable amount of time, we can figure out pretty much what and how much. It doesn't mean that, that when you finally get a developer in, he says, well, I have a better idea, and you wanna, you wanna encourage those things. But I think you wanna put a, uh, put a box around it so that developers have the information of what is reasonable from the town's point of view. Because you don't want proposals that are just crazy and they just waste your time. Then once you have those things in place, you put together, you have the, the, the consultant put the three land use scenarios, and again, this, this is not, these aren't plans, but these are programs, development programs, how much, and how much of, of how many, the different kind of retail. There's some background noise there, could somebody mute their phone?
Yeah, who's paying? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, and then the developer, I'm sorry, the consultant helps you figure out what is going to be the, the best development solution from a, from a program point of view. And that becomes part of your, the, the foundation for your legislation. Now, there may be more than one example of that, there may be more than one scenario, but in effect, you are agreeing on what you wanna have happen downtown. And in that process, you can get some drawings that show, you know, what it looks like, the scale of it.
I gotta get a train, I apologize.
Nope, no worries. So, uh, and then you go into the phase two, which is actually preparing the, the, the language for the legis, for the zoning legislation. And, and appropriately, uh, as Sabrina and Greg have pushed, the notion that we need to get some form-based zoning in here to sort of resolve all that. And sort of the first peak at form-based zoning could be in the visualizations that you ask the developer to do of the preferred scenario so that you understand what that's like. And then eventually, um, you move to, I guess, a generic.
Environment on back stage.
EIS, right, that covers the whole area, that then gives an open door to the next step. This is, this is already gonna work from that point of view. Which I think is essential to get them to walk through that door. And then you put the legislation, and then the Town Board legislates it. And so I, and having responded and done these kinds of studies, it seems to me that we want, if, if we can find a way to organize it concisely, that there's a way to encourage more, uh, proposals that are more in line with exactly what we're looking for. And we can also encourage a quicker timeframe, because unless I'm mistaken, time is an element here. And I'm, I'm not sure that we wanna say, oh, we need to extend the moratorium, because we haven't done our studies yet. And I'm not sure that this is something that needs to take actually that much time, I really don't. The other thing, the caveat in that is that I would not put timeframes on these activities. I would let that be part of the proposal. Let develop, let consultants come in and say how much time they need to do each work element and the sequence in which they're gonna do them, and how they're gonna do them. But time is essential to understand, and let them propose that. And I, and I, I promise you from my doing this many years, you don't wanna build a long timeframe into your proposal, because that just drives up the cost, and then you're out of, you're out of the game. So I think it's in your interest to let them sort of compete on that basis, and make their case on, on, partially on that basis as well. So this was done in the spirit of that. And when you get through this process and you actually have legislation in place, then you're gonna be talking, then you're gonna send out proposals, uh, uh, RFPs for how, where, and when. But if we can just focus on what and how much in a very focused way, I think we'll get it done more quickly, less expensively, and, uh, I think it'll be easier to assess what comes in. Hopefully, we get lots of proposals coming in. So that's my effort, that's what I did.
I don't wanna oversimplify it, but I, I will anyway, I guess it's, that's what I do. But, um, is this just a question of mostly also three or four floors? Because there might be some areas we want three floors, there might be some areas we want four floors. Like on North Greeley, maybe we want four floors, and, you know, but South Greeley, maybe we don't want four floors.
I think that, that was really a separate issue, and I, yeah, I think in general, maybe Sheila can speak to this, because she's really been leading the, the vanguarding this. In general, there was, um, not that much appetite for anything more than three, from a planning board standpoint. And we based that really on the comp plan, which we didn't feel there was anything in the comp plan or all those discussions that really, uh, supported anything more than three stories. Not just because it's zoning, just because of who we are.
In the, in the comp plan, right?
Look, if I could respond to that, so I don't know if you guys realize yet, but the four of you are taking a position that nothing is built in the entire town over three stories. Because the comp plan specifically says that development should happen in the hamlets. We know development cannot happen in Norwood because of septic. The only place we could do development is in Chappaqua, and you four are saying nothing more than three stories. So by default, you're limiting all developments in the town to three stories. And I, I thought that's not looking forward, I see that as looking back. And I thought this was a zoning exercise to look to the next thirty years on how we could change the zoning in the downtowns to foresee what's gonna happen in the future. And by limiting to three stories, I think we're just kind of putting our heads in the sand and saying, let's not change, let's just stay we are. And I think that's gonna scare developers away. We're putting up a big sign that says, don't come to Newcastle if you wanna build anything more than three stories. And, and I think that's just gonna scare, scare guys away, that's all.
It could, I guess, but I guess.
I disagreed at the meeting the other night.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I, I'll just hop in, because it's kind of administrative. Absolutely, Greg, I think you articulated very correctly, and I think, um, uh, you know, I, I wouldn't portray it any other way, other than I think you really accurately said it. We understand that that's what we're saying, that we would be limiting, uh, structures to three stories throughout the town.
What if the developers wouldn't wanna, aren't, shouldn't we bring some developers into the conversation? Because what if we all decide that, yes, three stories is the correct amount, and then developers say it's not economically feasible?
So my, so my point with, my point, and V, you got the wrong developer. Honestly, the longer, my feeling is, the longer you wait, the more valuable your land is at three stories. Somebody's eventually gonna come in and build three stories.
But then my response to that is, again, looking at the downtown, I agree, just due, due to the physical configuration and due to we have so many small little landowners, that would be very difficult to consolidate land on North Greeley and Upper King to do anything more than three stories. I think physically, you'll never see that hap, or not never, but it'll be a long time before you see that. But if the town has plans of doing something with the train station, and there's a thousand cars that have to be considered, a thousand cars have to go into a deck, and the only way developers don't be able to afford the deck and to pay off that debt is by density, and since we're limiting our footprint, I only see the density going up. And if you say, well, you only have three stories to do it, I don't believe that pencils out. I ca, right now, in my office, we have twenty-six projects that we're working on. Twenty-five of them are mixed-use projects. Twenty-three of them are at five stories and up. There's only two, one's at three and one's at four. Everything else is five or more, and the developer has to get the five to pay off the obligation or the bond for the parking structures. And I think that's where the, the might, the economic disconnect is gonna hurt town. That it's, it's, I don't know how many cars are in the parking lot, I'm picking a thousand.
It's more, it's thirteen hundred.
You're look, thirteen hundred, you're looking at a, a big expense if the town says to the developer, hey, you can have our land, but you have to provide parking for all these people. That, that's an expensive lot.
So, uh, Greg, you're right, the, the math, the math, under that scenario, you're correct about that math. I mean, it's very expensive, I don't know if it's twenty-five thousand a space or thirty, I don't know what it is these days, but it's a big number. An acre of parking, right, acre, an acre of parking, a deck will cost you, what, three, four million bucks? So I understand that, that, under that scenario, that's true. To me, it's, it's, we're starting, we're starting from the wrong place. To me, it's what kind of town do we wanna have, and that's what we need to get to, come to grips with. My contention is, or my suggestion is, not contention, is that in this RFP, in this study, we don't have to address that. We don't. We can put this out there, I, I think it's the, the where and how and, and how, the next step when you get developer's proposal, when you issue that RFP, you can say no more than three stories, or five stories, or with a parking deck, or not a parking deck. I think we ought to be talking about a, we ought to be getting, uh, a, a conclusion to this study, which talks about the limits of development, without having to like, expand the bridge or, or deal with the sewer thing that we just don't wanna take on. The limits of what we can do, not how we do it, but the limits of what we, what we do, can do. And then, uh, meaning how much, and what land use we want. The discussion of whether it's six stories, or three stories, or two stories, I think is something that we can work on in the interim and come to some conclusions, uh, on that. So it's a, it's a very legitimate discussion, I think it's an important one. I'm not sure it's sort of necessary to have at this moment to come to an RFP, that I think actually doesn't need to include that.
Right, and I, I'd like to see this data, I mean, I, I would like to just see what, I would like to see an open-ended RFP where basically they come back and show us what it would look like, maybe three stories in some areas, four stories in some areas, and then at that point, we could decide what, what's best. I mean, the, the truth is, we already have three stories in some areas. The comp plan clearly says that residents wanna, wanna change. And I'm not saying it should be four or five stories, but I also don't wanna issue an RFP that limits us to essentially the status quo, when that's not what the comp plan speaks to. Like Greg said, we, we need to, we, we're telling developers, this is where the construction has to be, and then we're possibly tying their hands. and then we're possibly tying their hands, and that's a problem, so let's...
I think all this will check the rise of the comp plan. I think the comp plan, yes, people wanna see change, and yes, people absolutely wanted to see a vibrant downtown hamlet. But what they also didn't wanna see is they did not wanna be, you know, Scarsdale, they didn't wanna be white plains, they wanted to be a northern Westchester, bucolic, quaint community. So I'd be hearing, you know, the expediency of town-owned land, you know, and, and density there versus what do we wanna be? So I think to say people just wanna change, yeah, they wanted a cool, vibrant, active downtown. But they didn't wanna lose the small-town feel, which is why they moved here in the first place, and what attracted them and made them choose a northern Westchester community over a southern Westchester community.
First of all, I do think people do wanna be more like, more like Scarsdale. The complaint you usually hear is we don't wanna become a Mount Kiska, which is sort of just a scare tactic. But putting that aside, we also can't...